We're going to call a meeting of the Board of Supervisors to order today. It's Thursday, June 18th, 2020. It is just 8:30 a.m. We're in the community center at Sierra Room. We're all social distancing at this meeting, and this is a virtual meeting by the Board of Supervisors. So can we just have a roll call to get us started here?
Supervisor Giomi?
Here.
Supervisor Bonkowski?
Here.
Supervisor Bagwell?
Here.
Supervisor Barrett?
Here.
Mayor Kroll?
Here.
O'Quams is present.
Should we call on our good friend Louis Locke from the Fountainhead, Four Square, to get us started today? Good morning. You look good and relaxed. Give us a good one.
Thank you. Good break. Lord, we thank you for your abundant mercy and infinite grace. We pray for the continuing reception of public lives in our community that affect so many people. We pray your blessing upon the people of our community, especially on our supervisors' granting wisdom and blessing upon them and their families. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Louis. Would everybody please join me in a pledge of allegiance? A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands as one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. All right, we're now going to move on to item number five. This is a time for public comment. The public is invited at this time to comment on and discuss any topic that is relevant to or within the authority of this public body. We have gotten a fair number of public comments on a couple of agenda items here today. I think you can, for those listening on the phone, you can assume that everybody here has read every word of every one of those public comments. So if you want to repeat those, that's fine. Do what you want on your comment period. But I think it's a fair statement to say that we've all taken a pretty close look at what the comments are. All right. Desi, who do we have first up on public comment?
We have a couple callers this morning.
Sure.
Caller, it's your turn for public comment. Please state your name for the record.
I'm not sure who's first. I'll go first.
Go.
My name is Krista, K-R-I-S-T-A, Leach, L-E-A-C-H. I'm from the Valley View Trust. I'm calling in about the planning, the zone amendment, item number 24B on the agenda. Our home is at 4031 Center Drive, and we also own the vacant one-acre parcel next door, which we like to call our very own nature preserve. I did send everybody on the board additional information and our input, and I trust that you've all read that, so I'll just make a closing statement. It is imperative to us in this ever-decreasing semi-rural area of South Carson City that you hear us and take our needs and lifestyle into consideration. We have significant new construction and development on both sides of South Carson Street, including the very short-sighted narrowing of Carson Street itself. Until I did the research last week and saw our input, we only knew of the Jackson Village and Ross Park developments. We were not aware of the East Roland Street condominiums or the 34 Silverview townhomes. We are at a loss to understand why we're not noticed about Silverview, as that is less than one block from our properties, nor do we understand how commercially zoned properties somehow became a high-density townhome development. Before we stop intersections at Silver Sage and Coons and Silver Sage and Clearview, are disasters waiting to happen. Not many drivers know the proper rules to navigate them, and we are subjected to stand offs almost every time we drive through them. We are now definitely getting the 34 single-family lots on the 2.75 acres known as Silverview, directly opposite the subject property. To put another 35 homes across the street is even more encroachment. The traffic is already extremely dangerous on Clearview, as it is one of the main arteries through our section of town to get to the freeway going north. And let me remind you, it has no sidewalks. Some of you are retiring or leaving the board. We beg of you to make the correct decision for the future of our semi-rural area, which is gravely threatened. In addition, there is a great deal of wildlife in our area, which is also significantly threatened, as there are fewer and fewer over spaces for them to travel through. We cannot take any more of this California-style takeover. It is not what we thought we would get when we relied on the zoning laws around us when we purchased our properties. Please note that this was not a unanimous decision by the planning commission. There was one saying "no" vote. The subject parcel is in need of split zoning for the east and south sides of the property, similar to the South Point subdivision directly to the north. So the zoning amendment application should be categorically denied right now. Please, please take us into your consideration. Thank you.
Thank you, Krista, for your comments. Anybody else on public comment?
Yes, we got one more caller. Caller, it is your turn for public comment. Please state your name for the record.
Thank you. Thank you. Good morning, Mr. Mayor. This is Michael Tancheck.
Hey, Michael, how are you doing?
Long time, no talk.
Haven't talked to you.
I'm doing pretty good. I was doing better until somebody decided I needed a whole bunch of new neighbors.
Yeah, I haven't talked to you for 40 years. How are you doing? Okay?
(laughing). I'm doing, yeah, I'm doing pretty good. Okay, my name is Michael Tancheck. I'm a property owner, resident at the 740 Clearview Drive. This is the intersection of Center and Clearview. Probably of all the residents down here, I have the most property that actually fronts this project. Earlier on, back in February, I did provide comment opposing the townhome development up at Silverview on the corner of Center and Clearview. Evidently, once the Philbyly Casino deal fell through, they were unable to do anything with that property. I have a lot of, quite a few objections or comments objecting to the project. I did include a map that shows the alternative that was proposed by the residents, including the Leaches, Greg Short, who's across the street on Clearview, which would be consistent with the master plan, number one. Number two, it would be consistent with past practices of this board in terms of transition, and it would be consistent with the development, Jim Bodden's development there at South Point. It would basically stick with the single-family 21 coming down Center. And then, if you, it's not on, it doesn't show on the exhibit that was provided by the planning commission staff, but if you look across the street on Clearview for that property, the actual development that's taking place is also consistent with SF-21. And so the idea would be to just bring the remaining 300 feet on Center as SF-21, match what's across the street on the Clearview side, which is basically developed, is developed as SF-21, and then the remaining could go with your, you know, could go with the 6,000 stuff. All of the arguments that were in the Pansky report, I think, are a little skeptical. You know, the development, I call it the devil's triangle down there behind the bowling alley. It's really, you know, they're using that as an argument for higher density development over here, but really it's just an isolated island, you know, backed in by Mills Park, the fire department, Carson Street, the freeway, Jackson Village. I mean, that was, that's crazy. I mean, that's a bunch of little houses jammed in, bordered by Kohl's loading dock, the equipment yard for South Point Gas, and you got J.C. Penney's parking lot, and greater than that, a credit union walling it in on the other side. I mean, that, you know, how that happened, beyond me. Also, another issue that I brought up with the, with the planning commission has to do with our wells. Commissioner Perry was surprised to learn that there are actually people who are on domestic water systems here in Carson City. On the periphery of the parcel itself, I'm on a well. I'm about 60 feet, the wellhead is about 60 feet from the property line. Silver Saddle Stable, or Silver, excuse me, Silver Peak Stables, which is also at the corner of Clearview and Center, they're on a domestic well there. The Frenches, they're on the corner of Silver Sage and Clear, or Silver Sage and Clearview, they're on a domestic well, as well as the Creches with their little ranch house down there between me and the Leaches. So we would, you know, we'd really like you to take a look at that, you know, look at our alternative proposal, kick it back to the planning commission for them to amend their approach. I think it's a better, it's better, it's consistent all the way around, and it pretty much meets our objections. Some of the stuff that probably is going to be foregone is the traffic, you know, using the numbers and the thing. We've got 1,400 new people moving in down here. If all the, if all the development that's taking place is going to, you know, is going to happen, that would be this parcel, that would be the Silverview condominiums, the monstrosity up on the hill behind the Fandango, and then you go over the other end of Save Mart, and you've got 100, I think it's, where they say 143 units or something, or scoped in for that area there. So those are, those are west of Carson Street, so they don't, they don't impact us directly other than, for example, the traffic flow. Clearview is already a major pass-through between the freeway intersection and Lyon County. It's a lot, it's faster to get to the freeway from my house, which is on Clearview. It's faster for me to go to Fairview to grab the freeway than it is to go a couple blocks south of here. So, you know, you've got a lot that's going on down here, and I think it all needs to be considered, not just, you know, well, look at this one parcel, and there's only, we're only talking 35 houses here. Well, no, we're talking probably over 500 houses down here, or dwelling units, and that's going to be a significant impact, particularly in regards of basically the lifestyle that the people down here have chosen. You know, we like, we like the space, you know, we like the critters running through the yard, this, that, and the other thing. You know, we've got horses, we've got goats, we've got chickens, we've got donkeys, somebody around here's got a peacock. And, you know, we don't see that as being particularly compatible with what's kind of being injected into the community here. I would also point, you know, but point out the, that, you know, the livestock issue is also, is also significant, because there's a, you know, there's a definite break between SF, the SF-6,000 stuff, or, yes, and, and, you know, the properties that are allowed to have animals, and the good transition, the SF-21 is a good transition for that. So anyway, I would actually, to consider our, consider our alternative proposal, kick it back, kick it back to the planning commission, and amend it, and we can all, you know, I think we could all go away happy. So those are my comments. If you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
Any questions of Michael Tancheck? Anybody? I don't see any Michael, but for those of you on the phone, I'd encourage you to stay on and listen. I know sometimes it's a little difficult and boring to watch the TV till we get to the agenda item, but I'd encourage you to kind of watch what goes on. We apologize that we don't, we usually have public comment as each agenda item comes around. Unfortunately, we can't really make that work with virtual meetings anymore. So we're looking, actually looking forward to hopefully going back to normal, if there is such a thing. But hang on, if you, if both you and Krista could just watch, and I know there are other people watching out there. Okay, any other public comments, Desi?
No, that is it for public comment, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Let's take up item number six. This is for possible action, approval of the minutes of May 21st, 2020. Everybody had a chance to look at those? Motion's in order.
I move to approve the minutes of the Carson City Board of Supervisors for May 21st, 2020, with two corrections. Tamara, can you read the corrections into the record, please?
From the Airport Commission, for the Airport Authority, the word "three grants" was removed, and it said the following grants. And also, the word "inequity" was fixed, and it is, equity was fixed to, into inequity.
I can't.
And that's under timestamp.
Couldn't hear all that, so maybe it's a microphone down there. Let's see if we can get it a little more clear.
Yes, under item 13A, there are two references, one to two grants, and then detail of three different grants. So that was corrected so that it's consistent throughout that item, 13A. And then, under timestamp 9/1841, in the sixth line, it says "there's no equity," and it should be "there's no inequity." So with those corrections.
Good catch. Good catch. Any other changes? There's a motion, and I didn't, is there a second on that?
I do.
Okay. Are there any other discussion on this motion? If not, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed nay, carried. Thank you very much, and good catches on those. All right. Let's now take up the item of the agenda. Any Board member want anything pulled off the consent agenda for individual discussion today? Anybody? Okay. I don't see any. Anybody want, city manager, any changes to the agenda other than, outside of the consent agenda?
No changes.
No changes? Okay. Board, are we okay with the agenda as published? All right. Unless there's objection, without objection, then we'll take the agenda as published in the order it was published. So let's now take up item, the consent agenda. Anybody have any changes to the consent agenda? Ask again. We ready for a motion? Let's take a motion on the consent agenda then.
I move to approve the consent agenda as published.
There's a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda as published on the motion discussion. Hearing and seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed nay, carried. Thank you very much. All right, let's go to the regular agenda. We'll start at item number 13. Carol, I'm going to let you do this one this time.
Perfect. Thank you. Good morning, Carol Lakers, Purchasing and Contracts Administrator. This is to, for discussion and possible action regarding a determination that Reno Tahoe Construction, Inc. is the lowest responsive and responsible bidder pursuant to NRS Chapter 338, and whether to award contract number 19300183 for the Riverview lift station upgrades to Reno Tahoe Construction for not to exceed amount of $406,397.53.
Very good. All right. Dan, you want to tell us why we're doing this?
Yes, sir. Good morning, Board. Dan Stuckey, Deputy Public Works Director for the Record. This lift station is located in the East Fifth Street over in the Hells Bells, Carson River Road area, so all of those houses, the sewage goes to this lift station, critical lift station for the city. It's one of five major ones that we have. It's been on our CIP list for a long time to replace this one. It's old, over 40 years old, end of useful life. It was constructed in a manner that makes it very difficult to maintain for our operation folks, and then just outdated technology. So again, on our list for a long time. One item to note is the bid did come in very low, which from budget perspective is a good thing on paper, but it's definitely something on the public works side that we look at and want to make sure that we protect the city from a situation where you could get excessive change orders or something like that. So we did do some research and homework on our end. We reached out to the contractor, made sure they were comfortable with their, with their bid. They were. We also looked in, Reno Tahoe Construction has done a project around six years ago in Carson City, successful project. They did a very good job. Andy Humor, our wastewater utility manager, he came from us, from the city of Sparks. They've done a number of projects for, when he was up in city of Sparks, they've done a good job. And, you know, it's, there's a lot of factors that come into, you know, the bidding that we receive, and, you know, some, sometimes a project just fits really nicely in somebody's schedule, or they, they're hungry for the work, and they fit it in, and they really offer a competitive price. So in summary, we feel good about the price, we feel good about hoarding the contract, and that's the project.
Okay. Board members, any questions of, it's the Deputy Public Works Director. Is that it now?
Yes.
All right. Deputy, 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 all right. Supervisor Bonkowski, go.
I just wanted to thank you for answering all my questions before I asked them.
Welcome.
That's why you made deputy.
Keep it up. Yeah, you set a high bar now.
Any other, any questions? Ready for a motion? Yeah, I can do it. Motion's in order.
I move to award contract number 19300183 as presented.
There's a motion and a second on the motion discussion. I don't see any, and I don't hear any on the, on the motion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed nay, carried, unanimous. Thank you. Let's take up item 14. This, Carol, this is me, I guess, or who's going to do this one. This is a discussion regarding proposed amendments to the interlocal cooperative agreement between Campo and the Carson City, RTC and the Carson City Board of Supervisors to clarify the authority of each organization. Oh, we got Lucia here. So is this a power grab?
(laughing) Good morning, Mr. Mayor. So this agreement outlines the responsibilities of the organizations with regard to transportation planning, street and highway construction projects, implementation of our public transit, and other activities necessary for execution of our transportation program. It was really a cleanup. The last time this agreement was amended was in April of 2013. At their respective June 10th meetings, both the Regional Transportation Commission and the Carson Area MPO Boards approved the amendments as shown in your packet here today. It is not a power grab. It's, it's a cleanup of some roles and responsibilities as, as requested and identified by our Deputy District Attorney, Todd Reese. So with that, I'm happy to answer any additional questions.
Good. Any questions, Lucia? All right. Oh, I got one.
Yeah, I just, I just, I just had a comment. In the, the first section, the second paragraph right at the top, are we missing a letter A in there? One, two, three, four, five down. It reads right now as amended April 18th, 2013, and amends it by adding paragraph to city agrees. I think it should say, amends it by adding a paragraph to city agrees. Or am I reading that incorrectly?
There's a hidden, not really hidden, but 16 at the end of the strike through. So it reads, amends it by adding paragraph 16.
Oh, I see it. Okay. My bad. Thank you.
Any other questions?
I, I thought I was going to get the Brad Bonkowski proofreading award for the day, but clearly epic fail. Sorry, Brad.
Can't compete.
It's the Ward Two Proofreaders Award.
It's all right. It's all important. You know, one time at the legislature, I ran a bill that had to change one comma, and that was a big bill. That was huge. One comma with the Colorado River Commission, you know? So read these things carefully. Okay, any other questions? Anybody? Who's sitting next to you out there, by the way?
He's unrecognizable, but this is Mr. Todd Reese himself.
Man, it's great, but you grew that in a hurry.
It, it did grow in a hurry, Mayor.
All right.
He's auditioning for ZZ Top next week.
You heard that? Okay. You look good. All right. Thank you. We ready for motion? Motion's in order. Supervisor Bagwell.
I move to approve and authorize the mayor to sign the amended agreement.
There's a motion and a second on the motion discussion. Hearing and seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed nay, carried. Let's take up item 15, finance. This is the Public Enemy Property Insurance Program. What we got here? Ms. Russell's here. Are we still insured?
Yes, we are.
All right. Are we chiefly insured, or are we well insured?
Well, we're insured enough.
All right.
Chief and insurance don't go together.
They don't. That's right. All right. Go. Well, good morning to you first.
Good morning. Good morning. So Sherri Russell, CFO for the record. And the first item I have is in regards to our insurance. We made a big change last year from Travelers to Argonaut, and this year, the increases were relatively small for most of our insurance companies, with the exception of PIPIP, which is our property insurance program. That one went up 23%, which is huge. So I have Brandon with us. He's with our USI Insurance, and he can explain more exactly why that went up so high.
Okay. Brandon, are you on the line?
Good morning, Mayor. Brandon Lewis here. Can you hear me okay?
We can.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, and good morning, Mayor and Board and staff. Sherri, thank you. We did see an additional significant increase from the property insurance program. Unfortunately, the property insurance markets have continued to firm well into 2020. Our projections early in the year were for double-digit rate increases with a wide range. We're seeing them anywhere from 20 to 35% just in northern Nevada, but I've also heard in southern Nevada, the rate increases are above 20% as well. Leading into this, following many years of what we call the soft insurance market, starting in 2017, the insurance companies started to incur much higher than average property and catastrophe losses. I believe we have it noted in the staff report, but in 2017, there was about $200 billion in insured losses, $80 billion in 2018, and for the whole period from 2017 to 19, there's about $400 billion in losses. This compares to an average loss of about $50 billion a year. So unfortunately, the reaction from the insurance companies and the reinsurers have been to carefully reevaluate how they price the coverage and capacity or limits that they offer. So as Sherri noted, the increase this year we saw was approximately 23%. That includes a very mild increase in property values, which are trended up each year, anywhere from 1% to 3%. So we've seen that, and that's driven most of the property increase. Because Carson City has an excellent loss record, we have asked and included you on a priority list requesting any possible rate relief. This program has over about 10,000 members in it, and so at the end of the negotiating period, they're always working to finalize all the numbers. So we're continuing to push for that with the goal of improving this as much as possible. I'd be happy to answer any questions on the property or the rest of the program that this item includes.
I just have one before we go on. In addition to price, to changing their pricing for the insurance company, are there changes in coverage that would also affect us in an adverse way?
There were a number of minor changes, as there are each year, to the property program. The most significant, unfortunately not expected, is a more clear exclusion for communicable disease virus.
Right. I wonder how they came up with that?
I know.
Bet they're going to sleep. They're collecting premiums, so maybe they're not sleeping. All right, go ahead.
Right. No, no. But the challenge is that until this point, most commercial property insurance policies had an exclusion for viruses, because it wasn't necessarily their intent to cover losses, since property's meant to cover direct physical damage or loss to property, tangible loss. So most commercial policies include a virus exclusion. This program did not have an exclusion leading up into this renewal, and it actually had an endorsement providing a very limited supplement for each member of up to 500,000 for business interruption loss resulting from a communicable disease. The challenge with it was that, that endorsement also had a $10 million aggregate shared with thousands of members. So to be honest, practically, it didn't have much effect. It only takes a few hundred members applying for that $10 million for it to dry up, and they're anticipating it will. And that's the most major change, but there's a lot of discussion right now in the industry about whether insurers should pay business interruption losses resulting from this, you know, pandemic, from closures ordered by governments. And we're seeing a lot of litigation, and I think it's going to go on for years, but the carrier, like others, are adding what they believe are just for years. But the carrier, like others, are adding what they believe are just clear exclusions for something they may never have intended to cover.
Okay.
And Brandon did market this, but PIPIP is just the only one out there that covers, has the coverage that they do for earthquake and, and all those types of insurance. So we did look around when we realized that it was going to be such a huge increase. Last year, I had great news because we had a decrease because we went to Argonaut as opposed to Travelers. So in the budget, I did kind of anticipate that we were maybe going to have a, see a bigger increase this year. So fortunately, the increases are covered. But like Brandon said, he's still working on trying to get that lowered. So cross your fingers, he can get it lowered.
And Mr. Mayor, do you mind if I add one additional note?
Go.
Thank you. I just wanted to thank Carson City staff, from Sherri, Cecilia Meyer, I think, as we just heard, Deputy Public Works Director, Mr. Stuckey, Stephanie Hicks, Rob Fellows. I might miss a couple, but because we're anticipating these rate increases, they worked extremely hard to help us update and make sure the city's property schedule was as accurate as possible. We did a lot of updates with regard to flood zones to ensure that the rating was correct. And in doing so, running the numbers, we saved approximately $30,000, thanks to the city staff working hard to make sure the data was accurate and that everything was cleaned up. So that saved about $30,000 off what would have been an increased renewal over that amount.
Okay. And Sherri, excuse me. This is budgeted. Do we have money to cover this?
We do. We do. I, I-
Well done to you then. Well done.
Well, thank you. Do what I can.
What's the dollar increase?
Is $156,000, I believe. I believe it was $156,000. Oh, you know what? It's back here. $158,000.
$158,000. All right. Questions to Sherri? Anybody? Supervisor Barrett?
Thank you. This is a philosophical question, and I apologize for that, but I'm really kind of perplexed by this. There's a, going to be at least a three-month hole and probably six to nine months in activity. It'll increase as the effects of the coronavirus mitigate. But when nothing's happening, the possible losses from property and casualty go down, don't they? And how long, to piggyback on that, how long before you get a final answer on your attempts to lower this?
Like we used to say in the law business, innocent until proven broke. Good one, Mayor. Okay, go ahead, Brandon.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor. Supervisor Barrett, thanks for your question. The answer to the, the second part is we should have a final update on our request for relief by Monday on the property program. But we always work as much as we need to right up until the July 1 renewal to see, to see if we can get any changes on that. And, and you raise a good point about the, the reduction in activity. You know, of course, on the business side, so many businesses were closed and had much less activity there. You know, autos were sitting and not doing much. The challenge with public entities, especially with a city, you know, county, is all the operations that, you know, continue and, and in some respects, you know, increasing exposure from, you know, the sheriff's department, the fire department, the health, health department, you know, with the additional COVID testing that they've been working so hard to ramp up. The challenge there, of course, is that carriers don't necessarily see reduced exposure for a government entity where you might have for a business that's completely shut down. But I agree with you in the concept. It's, it's a really challenging time for the insurance markets to have increasing rates when we're in such challenging budget times, which is why we want to do everything we can to mitigate this.
Very good.
Thank you.
Other questions? Anybody? Are we ready to take a poison pill or a bad pill? Let's have a motion.
Sure. I move to enter into the insurance agreements for fiscal year 2021 as presented.
There's a motion and a second on the motion discussion. Hearing and seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay, carried. Thank you. All right.
Thank you. I want to thank Brandon too. He's, always does a great job for us.
You do.
Thank you, Brandon.
So now go out and scrap some ore.
Thank you. Well deserved, sir. Thank you. We appreciate your business.
Good enough. Thanks, Brandon. All right. Let's take up 15, Bravo. This is a possible action regarding a proposed resolution to augment and amend the Carson City fiscal year 2019-2020 budget, the amount of $11,451,742. We do these things fairly routinely. You want to tell us why we do them routinely and what's this one's all about?
Yes. Thank you, Mayor. So this is our second augmentation. We only do these typically twice annually. Our final augmentation for fiscal year 20, which ends June 30th, basically is just making sure we don't have any budget violations. So we're using that contingency for any unforeseen expenses. That's primarily the reason. So I'll go through pretty quickly fund by fund. If you have any questions, please stop me. We did not reduce the budget for all of the revenue losses that we projected in our reestimate. I did talk to taxation and they discourage people from doing that because that could put you in a budget violation situation. So they do discourage you from doing that. They prefer augmentations to be additions to revenue or moving money around.
And these augmentations, this is not new money.
No.
This is just moving dollars around in the right buckets.
Yes. It's basically using any contingency that we had for unexpected things that happened during the year.
Okay.
So the general government, I'll start with the general fund. Oh, yeah, sorry. It's right at the bottom. Thank you. Supervisor Stacy, I appreciate your help.
Thank you.
Okay, Vanna.
And your pay is my shit, though.
So for the general fund, we have, the first and foremost, we have this every year, it's the retiree and termination, annual and sick leave payouts. We just can't anticipate all of these. We do try to anticipate the best we can, but this year, we had some fairly significant higher employees that left. It was $397,518 in payouts. There were some long-term employees in IT, the undersheriff, and a captain, a fire captain, and then some highly, higher people in parks too, that, that retired or, or left the city. So, so unfortunately, that was a big chunk. But like I said, we do have those every year. That's kind of why we have a contingency. The public defenders agreement, just adjustment of 95,472. These are costs that are pushed down from the state. So it's an agreement. We just kind of have to go with what they're charging. Treasures and finance, we hired help this year to help us through the ERP implementation. It was just some part-time data entry help, but with the combined two departments, it was about $45,000. The sheriff had a phone contract renewal, and there were some very, very significant extra charges. So I added 80 grand to that budget just to be safe. But we since have worked with AT&amp;T, and so I don't, I don't think we're going to end up using any of that. But it's there just in case. And then their food, their kitchen budget for the, the detention center, we increased $67,400. This was actually part of the supplemental increases because we have increased this for a couple of years now. It's just food, food costs that are increasing. So we'll probably end up seeing this again next year since none of the supplementals move forward. The fire, the fire department had an increase for overtime of $200,000. There was actually no increase to wildland revenues. We usually see both increase, but they didn't send a lot of people out to wildland fires, so we didn't have any revenue to increase in that area. So it was $200,000 that we moved to the fire department overtime. And then dispatch had a little bit of overtime, about $57,000. They were a little short of staffing. They had some people retire and leave. And then also the COVID-19 kind of increased their activity too. So the two combined. Courts had a few increases. These are typically mandated service by NRS that they just can't say no mental evaluations. We do have a budget in there, but it's not quite where it should be. So I believe that was part of the supplemental request too, to get that up where it should be. So we'll probably end up seeing that one more time. And then I did increase a few budgets or their temporary staffing for COVID-19 for $31,839. I wasn't sure if they were going to have a big surge at year end because I know they've only been doing half of the cases that they normally do. And I wasn't sure if they opened up and then they'd have a big surge if they'd have, have more temporary staff. So again, that was just in case. And then their extraordinary court cases, we have always kind of left this because it can be anywhere from $30,000 to $100,000 depending on what's going on. This year, so far, we spent about $58,000. So I augmented by 75, again, just to be safe. Parks, they have the oldest fleet in the city. I keep hoping that we're going to replace enough vehicles that this, the vehicle maintenance will decrease. But it looks like we might have to adjust that because they're just, you know, we couldn't replace any capital this year. So they remain high. And then their irrigation supplies, a record number of people have been using the parks. And so as they do maintenance on the irrigation system, people are, you know, accidentally knocking over sprinkler heads. Apparently, there was an issue downtown with an irrigation that they had to have fixed. So they're just a little over budget this year by about $11,900 or $12,900. So I adjusted that to be safe. And then child protective services, again, that's a contractual thing with the state, so I did increase that a little bit. And there was some temporary staffing in health, again, the COVID-19, just to be safe. There were two transfers that were increased, the quality of life, for $51,451. That is for overruns and change orders with that four-points contract. We told you we would not transfer the contingency unless they needed it. They needed it. The contingency was a total of $73,583. We only transferred 51. So we did save a little money on that contract. And then on the grants fund, that $43,750 was actually 25% of FEMA. However, recently, we discovered we got some CARES Act money, so we're most likely going to use that and we won't end up transferring that 25%. And then landfill had some additional expenses. They also had additional revenues. So they had like banking fees that normally come in a little higher than what they're budgeted. So again, that's a thing that I'm going to have to add into the budget as we move forward. Equipment repairs and maintenance. The fleet just has a lot of big equipment out there. And unfortunately, they are a little over their budget, so we had to add to that. And then they have a lot of little vehicles too, and, and we added to the vehicle repairs and maintenance to cover those overages. But they do have the revenue. So we're just adding both sides of the equation. So in total, we had two, about $3 million available in the contingency fund roll forward. We're recommending that we transfer 1.3 million of that as part of this augmentation, which will leave 1.6 million to roll forward, or if we have shortfalls in revenue.
So you're leaving 1.6 million in contingency?
Yes.
Good. Okay.
That is what I'm suggesting. And again, a lot of these are, are needed, but some of them are just to be safe. So I don't necessarily plan on spending that 1.3 million.
What's it look like for year end if you got a little crystal ball for a couple of weeks? What, how are we doing on?
Boy, that's a good crystal ball. I'd have to have because we haven't had the April numbers yet for C-Tax.
That's fair. I got you.
I'll know those on, on June 30th. So I, I think we're going to be okay. But until I see those C-Tax numbers for June 30th.
That's why we have you here. Don't worry about it. Good answer. All right. All right. Anything else you got?
I was going to go through a few of the other funds.
Good.
So the capital projects fund, we did have a few things that were approved in IFC. A couple of them quite early in the year before this COVID kind of blew up on us. So we replaced a K9 that retired. We did some senior center landscaping. Again, that was early in the year. We might not have done that had we known this was going to blow up. But we, because of the COVID, we did some multi-factor identification. We had some security needs, $23,400. This was because we had so many people working at home. We did a secondary security system so nobody could get in.
Sherri, those costs will be reimbursable though?
Yes.
Under CARES?
Yes. Those will be moved in under the CARES Act. Yeah. And that's another thing I wanted to mention on the general fund is the EOC and a lot of the expenses of the people that worked on the EOC and out of the general fund will be moved under the CARES Act. They have to relate to, they have to meet, meet the rules, but, but we'll have some savings there.
And, and we're talking about both overtime and straight time, correct?
Yes.
If they pulled, I mean, if that's, I understand the CARES Act, it's if you pull them away from their regular duty.
Yes.
So that, that could be significant.
That is correct.
Yeah. Great. Thank you.
Mm-hmm. I also moved that 901,262 of on hold projects to the board-designated line item. So as we do our roll forward in December, we can look at moving that money back into those projects, or if we need it, move it back to the general fund or... And, you know, if April comes back a lot better and May comes in really good, I might be back in September to ask, ask if we can move those forward. But we'll have to see how the numbers come out. So right now, because we moved that 900,000, the ending break fix number is 1,820,000. Now, that doesn't include the one you just approved last week because I didn't have time to get it all in all this documentation, that 37,743 for the Roop Street project. So the available without that 900,000 is actually 1,43,563. So I'm, I'm hopeful to move that forward because as you remember, I dropped our break fix for 21 pretty low to be able to afford more capital. So, okay. So the transit fund, the library gift, the regional transportation, and the grants fund, we just added grants. We weren't aware of our new grants that were awarded. So we added both the expense and the, and the grant side. On the equality of life, we added some donations that we received for projects. And then I did transfer that land acquisition amount into undesignated, as we had talked about, to make it more transparent. The infrastructure tax fund, we actually got a reimbursement from SAC Wireless for the South Carson Street project. So we added that back into that fund. So that money will be available for corridor projects. The debt service fund, we had that big refunding, so I had to work those into the augmentations. So I don't have a budget violation for those. The ambulance fund, we've talked about quite a bit. They did have some sick and annual leave payouts, so we added those. And then a few slight adjustments for credit card charges, billing charges, depreciation. But the largest change was the two ambulances that were approved on April 2nd. And we actually had, if you look there, most of it's from additional revenue. So we had enough come in, in extra BLS fees, as well as interest, to, to afford that, most of that, those vans in the current year, and not use working capital, which is a good thing. And then there, we decreased, or we added a transfer of $143,960 to repay the ambulance fund for the med trans vans that we had been transferring to fleet for several years.
And the, just for the record, for the people listening, BLS is Basic Life Support System?
Yes, Basic Life Support, yes. And so just for the record too, in 2014, we had an agreement between ambulance and the, and the med trans that ambulance would transfer the cost of replacement vans to fleet. And then we had a bunch of management changes and nobody ever bought the vans from fleet. They were bought from ambulance. There was only one van that was ever bought from fleet. So this 143 is truing up. It's moving all those transfers back to ambulance. Since that's where they're buying them from, we'll just leave the money there. You'll see that again as we move to fleet. Stormwater, drainage, wastewater, and water, all three of those, primarily it's the refunding that I'm, I'm increasing for. that I'm increasing for. I did have some grant revenues for the emergency generator program that I adjusted in water as well. And then the permit fee, or building permits, that's pretty typical. We never know exactly how many permits we're going to have at the end of the year. So I basically increase revenue as much as we've received in the current year, and then whatever that dollar amount is, I add it to the ABIT contract. So that whatever we end up getting in revenue, it's always a percentage that we pay out. So we shouldn't ever be over with that methodology. And then Fleet, we already discussed. So the total citywide augmentations is $11,451,742. A vast majority of that is that refunding bond.
Okay. Questions to Sherry on this one? Anybody? Sounds a little complex, but it's what we do, we have to do for the audit purposes, and also it's government accounting.
Yeah, if you keep up with the meetings and come to every meeting, it should just be stuff we've already kind of discussed about, and then retirements.
Well, you know, Sherry, just pat you on the back for a second. You did a nice job on estimating revenue for the first cut on COVID here that we were going around. Well done. I mean, those things are hard to project.
Thank you. We'll see how April turns out. I'll pat myself on the back then. Thank you.
Good, all right. All right. Any further questions? Anybody? We'll take a motion to augment.
I move to adopt Resolution Number 2020-R16.
There's a motion on 2020-R16 on the motion discussion. Hearing and seeing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay, carried. Thank you. Okay. All right. Are we ready to now recess?
I think I've got one more item there.
One more, right. One more.
Then I'll stop talking. You can recess, I promise. So this one is, again, we do this every year. It's at year-end. We kind of look at every fund and determine if a potential shortfall in cash will exist, because we have to ask the board for a loan if there is a shortfall in cash prior to June 30th. That's via NRS. My accounting rules say I'm not allowed to have a negative cash balance. So these loans are in anticipation of a potential negative cash balance. Now, currently, I just looked today, and the transit fund is positive. So we might not even need these loans. If we don't need them, we won't do them. But they're always paid back within a month or two of year-end. They're always because of grants, because they're reimbursement-type grants. And like I said, this is an annual thing, and it's because of the rules, I'm trying to fit into both buckets and follow all the rules.
Okay. Any questions? Let me also say thanks to RTC and to Campo, our representatives on those boards. Sometimes RTC gets visibility, Campo sometimes doesn't, but it's an important part of how we survive around this northern Nevada region, immediate region around Carson City. So thanks to voting your time to make things work there. Any other questions? Motion's in order.
I move to adopt Resolution 2020-R17.
There's a motion to adopt 2020-17 on the motion discussion. Hearing and seeing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay, carried. All right. All right. Now we're ready to temporarily adjourn as the Board of Supervisors will turn the gavel over to Community Development, 24. Is that where we're going? Yep. Here you go.
I call the Redevelopment Authority to order. May I have a roll call, please?
Chairperson Bagwell?
Here.
Vice Chair Giomi?
Here.
Member Barrett?
Here.
Member Bonkowski?
Here.
Member Corl?
Here.
A quorum's present.
Thank you. We're now on Item 18 for public comment. Desi, do we have any public comment?
I see no public comment, Madam Chair.
Thank you. We'll move on then to Item Number 19, which is for possible action for the approval of the minutes of May 21, 2020. Does anyone have any corrections or changes? Okay, take a motion.
I move to approve the Carson City Redevelopment Authority minutes of May 21st, 2020, as presented.
I have a motion and a second for approval of the minutes. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We're now on Item 20A for discussion and possible action concerning a recommendation to the Board for the expenditures for fiscal 2021. Mr. Plummel, are you going to take us through this?
Yes, good morning. For the record, Lee Plummel, Community Development Director. This item is to authorize expenditures for kind of the routine items within the redevelopment revolving fund budget. Just a reminder, it's kind of for all the redevelopment revolving fund expenditures, it's a little bit of an extra step. You don't just put it in the budget and we can start spending it. We have to go through this process of authorizing the expenditure. That includes Redevelopment Authority and a resolution by the Board of Supervisors. So the items within this, the projects and programs on this agenda item are kind of the routine ones that you're authorized every year, some of which, you know, just authorize the expenditure. And for example, the facade improvement, it doesn't necess, it's not authorizing specific projects. They still have to come back through the Citizens Committee for specific projects. This does not include other items on the budget, such as the Third Street parking lot or projects like that, that need to come back for additional approvals, and you'll see those at a future date. One correction to this, the first item on the list there, so let me go down, and I'll go down the list for the benefit of the public of what we're approving here, but the first item on the list is $25,000 for the arts and culture events. You actually approved that, authorized that at your last agenda, which reduces the overall number by $25,000 to $1,560,427 will be the total on the resolution after removing that from the resolution. But these are things like Nevada Day, Farmers Market, Christmas Tree Lighting, Fourth of July Fireworks, which are now going to tentatively be scheduled for Labor Day, so keeping that, those funds in the budget. Incentive programs, various incentive programs, sales tax incentives, including campaigne. And then combined into that $300,000 is Nissan, Southgate Mall, and Carson Mall, so actually in the, I don't know if that's corrected in there, but that $300,000 is not just for the Southgate Mall and Carson Mall, but it's also for the Nissan dealership incentive. And if the resolution is not corrected to say that, we'll make sure it gets corrected to say that as well. You know, I see, okay. And just going a few more, this special event, street closures, $25,000. And I guess I'll note on that that there may be some savings there if we don't have any special event street closures this year, but it also goes into the beginning of next year's season. $50,000 for the facade improvement program. We have the utility, extension, and sidewalk improvement assistant program. The $25,000 that was identified in the budget by the Board for initial South Carson Street project landscape maintenance. And then the big one that Public Works is anxious to get started on is the downtown sidewalk landscaping and lighting improvements, which will be Curry Street between, which will primarily be Curry Street between Musser and Fifth Street with light, changing the lights, sidewalks, and undergrounding power. So I'll be available for questions if you have any.
Question?
Does anyone, okay, does anyone have any questions? Mr. Giomi?
The arts and culture is $25,000, right?
Correct.
And so the original amount was 1.58427, but you said we'd take it to 1.56427. Shouldn't it be 1.555?
It's 555 to do the math.
No, it's 25,000 out of 585 goes down to...
We have 580, not 585.
We have 580 on our agenda item. Expenditure of $1,580,427.
I think I have a, yeah, I think I have an old number on my staff report, on the copy here. I see that. You're right. Okay, so the correct number is 1,550,427.
That's what I showed. Does anyone else have a question? Supervisor Bonkowski?
Yeah, again, I would just note for the record, to correct the $7,500 for the Fourth of July fireworks, to note that it's for Labor Day fireworks.
Can we just correct it to fireworks?
I think we could just say fireworks, and we're safer that way.
Could be New Year's fireworks, or Christmas fireworks.
I just don't want it to be the October 17 fireworks.
What's that?
Because there's nothing going on on October 17.
Oh, I see. Well...
Okay, we're moving on. So then I have a question on the Kit Carson Trail historical marker. When I read the package for that, it indicates that the project cost is $36,750, but I see that the sandstone historical marker installation is indicating that there is no funding or it's to be determined. So I guess I'm wondering, what are we doing on this project? I hate to complete it.
The Culture and Tourism, it takes me, I'm still trying to remember the name of that, that's why, the Culture and Tourism Authority is still working on identifying funding. And, you know, the first step is working with Public Works to identify where they need to be located, because they're going to be within the right-of-way on the sidewalk. And so they need more information on the details of what installation is going to involve, and then they're going to work on finding funding or partnering with the city somehow to get it installed.
There was also, you know, things are up in the air still with the state a little bit, but there was also a grant from the state to CTA to fund part of this, and we were making up a shortfall. That's what that $20,000 was for.
So my question really becomes, the project will be completed without needing $10,000 back from redevelopment. That's...
David's on the phone.
Oh, that's really what I'm after. Okay. Mr. Peterson? Can't see his name.
David, are you unmuted?
Almost always.
I did talk with David yesterday, and he said any additional funding that would be needed to complete the project, that they have that available in CTA.
Okay, I just wanted it on the record, again, that the project will complete.
The CTA's made it very clear that we want this project to be done and finished, because it's been languishing for a long time. And it's a vital project for us. I mean, history is big for us, and this is a great way for us to show off our historic West Side, so.
Absolutely.
Can you all hear me?
There we go. Yes, David?
Hi, hi, everybody. Sorry about that. For the record, Dave Peterson, Executive Director with the CTA. To answer your question, yeah, any additional costs, we will cover those from the CTA perspective. And I'm not sure if that's what Member Giomi was just saying, because I was having a hard time hearing you guys.
I just needed that on the record, that the "to be determined" is not the Redevelopment Authority, and that you have sufficient source somewhere to complete the project. So thank you, Mr. Peterson.
Of course, that's absolutely correct. Yes, thank you.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Madam Chair, I need to back up. I was looking, so when talking about the numbers, I was looking, I actually was looking at a hard copy of the older draft version of it. So on the agenda is 1,580,000, 1,580,427. That's correct. I'm sorry. There's not, I was looking at something that had, that is the correct number that includes the trail markers, so that's what the motion would be. Sorry for my confusion on that.
The 25 comes off of that.
No, no.
He's saying he already fixed the 25.
I have already taken the 25 off.
Understood.
Yeah, okay.
It's correct on the agenda.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Plummel. Any further questions? Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
I move to recommend to the Board of Supervisors approval of the expenditures from the fiscal year 2021 redevelopment revolving fund, as presented with the changes noted regarding the fireworks.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Thank you. Mr. Extraordinaire on the phone applications back there, do we have any public comment?
Madam Chair, it looks like we have two callers.
Okay.
Caller, it is your turn for public comment. Please state your name for the record. Caller, it is your turn for public comment. Please state your name for the record. Madam Chair, that is it for public comment.
Thank you. Okay, then we will adjourn as the Redevelopment Authority and pass the power back. Thank you.
We'll reconvene the Board of Supervisors, and we'll take up the compatible item, Number 24, Item 24. This is discussion of possible action regarding a proposed resolution authorizing expenditure of $1,580,427, which we just verified from the fiscal year 2021 redevelopment revolving fund to support various events, incentives, and capital improvement projects as an expense incidental to the carrying out of the redevelopment plan. This has to be done by two-thirds vote of the Board of Supervisors. So in coming to this conclusion, we will adopt by reference everything that was said before the RTC or the planning...
Redevelopment.
Yeah. The planning. We'll incorporate all the comments and discussion. Is there further discussion on this? I don't see any. Motion's in order.
I move to adopt Resolution Number 2020-R18, incorporating the changes right into the record on the previous item.
There's a motion and a second on the motion discussion. Hearing and seeing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay, carried. Thank you very much. Let's go now on to Item 24-Brovo. This is discussion of possible action to introduce on first reading, first reading in an ordinance changing the zoning from single-family 1 acre to single-family 6,000 on property located at the northeast corner of Silver Sage Drive and Clearview Drive, APN 00912403. Heather, Heather Ferris, and you got, is Hope going to be there with you? No? No? Okay. All right. There's a lot of interest in this.
Yes.
Take us through it.
Heather Ferris, Associate Planner, for the record. The subject property is approximately 5.26 acres in size and is located immediately south of the South Point subdivision and is bounded by Silver Sage, Clearview, and Center Drives. I don't have it in yet. Can you do it?
Sure. Get it right. For everybody listening, we're putting in a thumb drive here to get this up on the screen.
Okay, thank you. So the subject property is approximately five point two six acres in size and is located immediately south of the South Point subdivision. It's bounded by Silver Sage, Clearview, and Center Drives. The property is currently zoned, single-family one acre, and has a master plan designation of medium-density residential. The applicant is seeking zoning map amendment to single-family six thousand. The zoning map amendment is the only matter before you today, and there's no proposed development for consideration at this time. As you know, the master plan is a policy document that outlines the city's vision and goals for the future and provides guidance for making choices regarding the long-range needs of the community. The zoning map is a tool to implement the master plan, and state law requires that the zoning be consistent with the master plan. The current zoning of single-family one acre is not consistent with the underlying master plan of medium-density residential. The medium-density residential designation provides for single-family residential neighborhoods at a density of three to eight dwelling units per acre. Compatible zoning districts include single-family six thousand, mobile home six thousand, single-family twelve thousand, and mobile home twelve thousand. The master plan also anticipates adjacent properties will develop into higher densities in the future, with properties to the north and south being designated as medium-density residential, and properties to the west designated as mixed-use employment. Actually, the master plan anticipates higher-density development southwest of the subject property, stretching down to the freeway with a mix of high-density residential, medium-density residential, and mixed-use residential designations. The property to the east across Center Drive are designated as low-density residential and not anticipated in the master plan to develop into lots smaller than one acre. So as you can see from this map, the site is on a boundary of where we transition from the higher density to the lower density. In order to approve a zoning map amendment, you must make all three findings in the affirmative. The Planning Commission heard the request at their May twenty-seventh, 2020 meeting and recommended approval to the Board of Supervisors on a six-one vote. Prior to the Planning Commission meeting, staff did receive seven written comments, either objecting to or voicing concerns with the proposed amendment. Those have been included in your packet, and as you know, we've also received two other comments from folks that spoke here earlier this morning. The concerns outlined in all of these comments were focused primarily on the fact that there's no development plan for consideration, and there's concerns with traffic impacts, impacts to groundwater, and providing either a buffer of one-acre lots along Center and Clearview Drive, or approving some sort of a split zoning with a single-family twenty-one thousand along Clearview and Center and SF six on the balance of the parcel. Impact studies will be required to be submitted as part of the application for any subdivision that comes forward, and will address impacts to utilities such as water, sewer, and drainage, and impacts to traffic. With regard to requests for buffer lots, again, there's no development project before you, so we can't discuss project design at this time, and the SF twenty-one is not consistent with the medium-density residential designation in the master plan. The lowest-density zoning that is consistent is SF twelve. I would point to Finding Two, which is land use compatibility with existing adjacent land uses and impacts to other properties in the vicinity. As outlined in the staff report, Finding Two is made in the affirmative as the SF six zoning would allow for development consistent with the master plan and parcels to the north. Also, this area will act as a transition between the commercial properties to the west and higher-density developments to the west. And then transitioning into the low-density parcels to the east of this project site. You may also recall that the parcel directly west of this project site across Silver Sage was recently approved for a townhome development, and that density that was approved was just a little bit over twelve units per acre. I believe it was twelve point three eight. And then, as I also noted earlier, southwest of this project site, you have the mix of higher-density uses that are anticipated. The applicant's representative, Susan Pansky, is participating via phone, and I'm sure she'll want to address the board. I'm available for questions, but before that, Stephen Potte with Development Engineering should be joining us on the phone and wanted to address a couple of items as well.
Okay.
This is Stephen Potte at Development Engineering. Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Thank you. So a couple of the items that the public brought up that I wanted to address are domestic wells and potential contamination to wells and groundwater, traffic, and then also some design considerations like sidewalk and where access will be allowed. So for domestic wells, there are standards that the city enforces for the minimum distance that a septic system can be from a domestic well, but there are no minimum distances for detention or infiltration basins. So that's not something that the city typically looks at in, in that part of the design. For intersections, again, since we don't have a subdivision that's submitted yet, we don't know exactly what the impacts will be, but as you know, at, at the tentative map, there's more analysis that goes into that, including looking at different intersections to evaluate the level of service. Also, some of the public were concerned about other entitled projects in the area and recently-built projects, and any traffic impact analysis would be required to take into account any entitled projects as well as projected growth for the area. And when we're looking at these, these zoning amendments, the, the thought process isn't whether or not a development could go in at that density with, with no impact at all to the infrastructure, but whether it could go in and be sustained with potential mitigation. So at that point, when a tentative map comes forward, there may be mitigations required to traffic and intersections, but again, that analysis isn't done until a project comes forward. And for sidewalks and the location of access and, and those sorts of details in the design, again, as you know, we typically rely on our development standards unless there is some sort of site constraint that's out of the ordinary that would require us to, to deviate from that. But again, until a subdivision comes forward, there's not a lot we can really say on those items. So with that, if you have any questions for me as far as wells or traffic or anything like that, I'd be happy to answer those.
I, I have one question. This is the mayor. What's your, what's your opinion on creating a, a buffer zoning along Center and Clearview, I think it is? To the, to the east, on the east side of the property? Or on the east and south side? What's your position on that?
For engineering?
Yeah.
Or is that to Heather? So from an engineering point of view, probably the, the biggest impact would be if, if there are driveways directly accessing those streets. Fewer driveways is always better as far as circulation, but typically with these subdivisions, you see one or two streets entering the subdivision and the driveways going to the interior streets, but it's hard to tell what would happen. You can also design them to have a higher density and have shared driveways to reduce the number of driveways accessing on those streets.
Heather, who can talk to us about why the zoning never caught up with the master plan on this piece of property? Anybody? Or has it just been one of those things that's out there? For everybody listening on this, one of, one of the issues that's here that Heather raised is the master plan declares that this is MDR.
Lee, yeah, Lee Plummel, Community Development Director. So I was, I was here when we went through the master plan process that led to the adoption in 2006. And I don't know if, if we looked at the map, master plan map prior to that, we, you know, typically, typically don't do that research, but I suspect that this was changed in, with the 2006 master plan, that before that, it probably wasn't designated for medium-density residential, but through that, through that public process, at, at which time we did, anywhere there was a change in 2006, we noticed surrounding property owners of that change. But I think this is one of those areas where we just reevaluated the future land uses, and it was changed within this area in general. And then as projects come in is when we typically, you know, there are some cases where the city may initiate changes, and there are some cases where we just kind of wait for, for future development to come in and, and make these requests. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, it did.
Can, can we discuss one of the public comments from earlier in the meeting about the proposal for split zoning on this with a, well, that public comment was for SF twenty-one But there's also the single-family twelve thousand that could be implemented upon Clearview and, is it Clearview and Center Street? So what is the process and what's the city's policy on, on doing split zoning, and how would that process work? So in other words, if the north, the northwest corner was single-family six thousand, which is adjacent to the North Ridge or the North Gate, North Gate subdivision, and then the balance was single-family twelve thousand?
Yeah, there's not a policy on, on split zoning per se. On a larger piece, it's not, not, it's not untypical to do that if you think about like the plateau development, larger pieces of property that have multiple types of densities, and even sometimes uses on a property, you'll, you'll split zone it so that then when development comes in, those boundaries become the boundaries for, for the different densities or, or different types of uses. So it's not, it, it's not against any policy or code to split zone a property like this.
So if, if that were proposed and accepted by the board, obviously, when the tentative map comes in, that may not match up exactly with the, with the set boundaries for the zoning. So at that time, then would the process be for the developer to come in with a boundary line adjustment to match up the split zoning lines with their proposal? So in other words, again, if they were going to build the sixth, SF six thousand in the northwest corner, but because of the lot sizes and the street layouts, they needed a ten or twenty or thirty-foot adjustment, the process would be to come to a boundary line adjustment?
Yeah, using my prior example, that you, that type of request usually comes from the applicant that knows what there's going, what they're going to do and where that boundary needs to be. So, so to kind of randomly put a boundary there without development, if, if that were split zoned now, if we, if, if it got split zoned with just kind of a boundary there, then it would be up to them to come in, use the acreages, and they may come in with a diff, with, they have development options based on the densities that are permitted. They could get, come in with the minimum lot sizes in those different areas. They may need to adjust the boundary. They may use the overall density and do a, dare I say, common open space or other type of development to shift it, to shift the density around. But yeah, if, if, if it's done beforehand, then they would, they may need to come in and adjust the boundary or adjust the zoning to match up what they want to do.
Well, if you, can I jump in for a second?
Brad, okay.
Go right ahead.
I still have more questions.
Okay, I, I want to clarify a point with yours. So, so if we were to split zone it SF six and say SF twenty-one, you're not, since it's a huge parcel, that, that line is sort of arbitrary anyway, right?
The line that's there now is not arbitrary because it came in with the development.
Correct, and it matches the parcel line. But what I'm saying is if you do a split, to Brad's point, if you split that, you're kind of-
Pretty arbitrary.
-splitting it arbitrarily anyway.
If I may speak to that, Hope Sullivan, Planning Manager. I want to go back to the three findings, and it sounds like you're focused on the second finding, which is compatibility. We also have our first finding, master plan consistency, which Heather spoke to. For master plan consistency, the least density would be the single-family twelve thousand. Procedurally, if the board finds that you cannot find compatibility based on the application in front of you, but you feel like you could find compatibility if those boundaries, as Supervisor Bonkowski identified, were SF twelve, we do need to go back to a first reading. So what we could do is if that is where the board lands in terms of looking at the findings, is we can work with the applicant to identify where that line is. You don't have to decide that today. You'd be looking at your findings, and you would, you would devise that we, if this is where you are, we cannot make a finding of compatibility based on what is before us. We do make the finding of master plan consistency. We don't want to go, we don't want to mess up number one to achieve number two, right? You need to achieve them both. But we can certainly work with the applicant between now and the next meeting because you would not be able to introduce the ordinance. Thank you.
Right, so, so my concern is that to the east and to the south, there are horse properties, and it's, there, it's a rural designation. I don't think that it is a good mix to put medium-density SF six thousand right next to horse properties, which then, looking at the map, you would want to create more of a transition zone between those two types of build-out, which, in my mind, the, the appropriate zoning and transition zone would be the SF twenty-one thousand. But as both Heather and Hope pointed out, that's not compatible with the master plan designation, which means that we would be looking at a single-family twelve thousand, which I don't think is adequate, but in this particular case, I think that that's the only way that it could work. So I'm, I'm very concerned about that transition, and I don't think that the SF six thousand is going to be appropriate here.
Basie, go ahead. Sorry. Where, what is SF twenty-one? What, what is it? Is it, is it in the low-density category? Is it?
So it's consistent with low-density residential, does not allow livestock, however.
Right. So the, the perimeter that Supervisor Bonkowski discussed centered Clearview, in order to make that compatible with not only zoning, but to have compatibility between that and the master plan, would have to, we'd have to do a master plan amendment if we wanted to put SF twenty-one in there and have the zoning and the master plan jive.
For consistency, yes.
And I was, and I was going to add to that, and I think Heather might have addressed it earlier, that as we talk about compatibility, that is also going to be a required finding of a subdivision map, so even if it's zoned, single-family twelve at that boundary, for, for compatibility, it may require larger lots there as part of a development approval, depending on what, on what that subdivision looks like. So that might, that's going, and that's kind of the discussion that was had at the Planning Commission regarding buffers, even whether it's all single-family six thousand or single-family six thousand, single-family twelve thousand, which would indicate the intent of a buffer. You're going to be in the same, same place with findings and addressing compatibility and doing what you think you need to do to address compatibility with a sub, with an actual subdivision and how big those lots are, actually are. actual subdivision and how big those lots are, actually are.
So today, could we, could we request or move that, since SF 12 is within the medium-density residential, that those lots adjoining Clearview and Center be zoned differently? Or would that have to go back, would we refer it back to the Planning Commission?
I think, I think as it's on the agenda, any change in the zoning designations would have to come back.
Okay, all right. I just share Brad's Supervisor Bonkowski's concerns regarding that transition zone.
Following up on that line of questioning, why would there have to be a master plan amendment if you want to SF 21?
According to the master plan documents, SF 21 is consistent with low-density residential. It's not consistent with medium-density residential.
You know, it's one of those things where I think people want to, I tend to agree with Supervisor Bonkowski here that, you know, when we're at this stage, it's probably better to try and iron these things out rather than, because I think, you know, there's a certain degree of weight that goes with the master plan development. But I think, you know, with this transition area there, we need to focus a little bit harder on that. So, you know, I guess one of the things that Stacy, Supervisor Joly is suggesting is take it to Susan Dorpansky and say, you know, we want to work with this to create a better transition zone here. I mean, they've got a pretty big hammer because they've got the master plan behind them, which is also something that people rely on as well as zoning. And that's what kind of makes this difficult, a pretty difficult decision because all other things being equal, if the master plan says it should be zoned a certain way, that's the way it should be zoned. So that's just one thought to go out there.
Susan is, I believe, on the phone. She may have comments for you.
Susan, Susan Dorpansky, you want to talk about that?
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Can you guys hear me? Okay, thank you. Susan Pansky for the record, representing the applicant. I do have a couple comments. I just wanted to, you know, related to the discussion about the 21,000 square foot lots, I just wanted to reiterate that that is a low-density residential zone compatible with the lower densities, not medium. So I don't think that that would be an appropriate zone in this location. And as it relates to the medium-density residential and the single-family 6,000, you know, medium-density residential, as we had pointed out, was put in this location in 2006, you know, to provide a transition and a buffer between the mixed uses and commercial properties to the west and the lower density to the east. If we were proposing SF 6 as an island within the MDR, I'd say maybe that wouldn't be an appropriate use, but we do have higher-density uses that are much more intense to the west and similar zoning also to the north in the SF 6. And a buffer between the SF 6 and the one acres, I mean, there are actually one-acre lots that were part of the South Point development when it was approved, that provided for a buffer and they back up to the single-family 6,000, and it doesn't seem to be a significant issue there. So I'd argue that there is an adequate buffer in place already with the MDR. From a split zoning standpoint, you know, for us, that would be difficult. It's not a large parcel. We're talking about 5.2 acres here with, under the 6,000 proposal, a maximum gross density of 38 units an acre, or 38 units total. So to split zone that really puts a constraint on us from a design perspective where, you know, we're trying to fit the larger lots into whatever the zone, the specific zone lines are on the south and the east while trying to fit the 6,000s into the northwest corner. You know, if that's the direction that you guys are going to go, while I don't agree with it, my preference would be to consider doing the single-family 6,000 for the entire parcel, knowing that there is a compatibility element that needs to be addressed as a part of a tentative map. And let us utilize the full density under the SF 6, and if we need to cluster it as a part of a PUD or a common open space subdivision, then we can certainly look at that and then have the larger lots on the south and the east side.
Okay. Further questions? Susan? Brad, Supervisor Bonkowski?
Hey, Susan, this is Brad Bonkowski.
Hey. Hey, Brad.
My question for you would be, what would your plan be to mitigate impacts between livestock, specifically equestrian, to the west and south, or excuse me, the east and south, and a medium-density subdivision? Because that's one of my major concerns is now we're putting more cars in higher density right up against people on horses. And that's an unusual occurrence in Carson City. So I understand your argument that if we allow the single-family 6,000 zoning for the entire parcel, that then you could come back with a plan to cluster higher-density zoning in the northwest and west sides of the project and keep larger perimeter lots on the south and east. But would there be other possible mitigations that you've thought about for that, the interactions between livestock and your subdivision?
So I would say there's a couple options. Related to the roadways and having traffic on Center and Clearview, you know, we don't have a specific plan designed yet. So I can't say exactly how it would work, but we would definitely look at where are the best places that we can direct traffic so that it's not going to be impactful. Just the fact that there is a road in between our property and the lower densities, I think creates a little bit of a buffer in and of itself. But then the other thing I would suggest is what they did on the Schultz Ranch project south of here, because that is a much higher-density project in comparison to the one-acre lots that surround it, is to do a deed restriction, making the residents of the new community very well aware that they are buying property that's located within an area that is permitted to have livestock and, you know, everything that goes along with that. And I think that that's been relatively well-received with the Schultz Ranch subdivision.
Yes, Susan. In fact, on other approved projects, we have included disclosure agreements for all purchasers. Because what I don't want to see either is people moving into a new subdivision, then turning around and complaining about property that has been under a specific use for 40, 50, 60 years. So, you know, it's the urban crawl. So I think that that's a good idea, either a deed restriction or disclosure or both.
Yes, agreed.
Help me understand how a deed restriction would work on this piece of property.
A deed restriction would prevent somebody in the subdivision, an owner in the subdivision, from filing a complaint against one of the adjacent properties for noise, dust, smell?
So the restriction would be on the, on the, the people who are going to be building in the zone of 5.2 acres, whatever that is. That's where they'd have to, we'd tell them to put a deed restriction on, or they would do that?
Well, I think that would come back in the...
We could condition the future tentative map, that deed restriction or disclosure would have to be made to each individual property owner.
So that may take care of that flow coming back from that development, the new development that may be going in there. But how does that help the transition issue that we're talking about here with respect to horses? I mean, granted, it takes away some of the liability potential there, but how does it help in the zoning and the stuff? How does it do that?
I don't think that Susan was indicating that it helps with the transition. I think it just protects the folks that currently have livestock and have for years.
So the, I apologize for you holding down this road. So the deed restriction would say that, what? Tell me that.
So it would essentially say, I can speak to that. It would essentially say that you are aware, as a property, person buying this property, you're aware that you're buying property that is adjacent to rural, low-density residential zone that has, allows livestock and all of the things that go with that. So that, like Brad had mentioned, the noise, potential dust, odors and things like that. So that it's been fully disclosed upfront and the deed restriction allows for it to come up in title when they're doing a search so that it's very well-known right up front.
Okay, interesting. Go, Laurie, jump in, I'm sorry.
Could I clarify? So let's say it received single-family 6,000. However, when the Planning Commission actually looks at their project, they could put conditions of approval like we've done on many projects, such as, I remember one, we said only single-story houses can be on this perimeter. So my question is, if it's 6,000 designation, can we force the lots that we want to have larger than the 6,000, condition it?
So you could potentially condition it if you can tie that mitigation back to one of the findings.
You see where I'm going here, is that...
It'd be in the compatibility under finding two.
Right. No, where in the seven findings in the other side of a map, right?
Okay, what you have before you today is a zoning map amendment. I'm just getting back to basics. Finding number two says this will be compatible with adjacent land uses. At the Planning Commission, the comments we received were very much associated with future development. We don't have future development in front of us. Therefore, we're not in a position for a deed restriction. We're not, we actually were not in a position for a single-story along the perimeter at Anderson Ranch. That was a volunteered condition. When you look at the findings for a tentative map, the requirement on compatibility is not on the list. Where that does occur is on the open space in the PUD. So if they opted for one of those options. If the board is concerned about the ability to make finding two, I would suggest that this matter be continued at the staff. As Susan Pansky outlined, there's a variety of approaches forward. And those include looking at an open space development, looking at a PUD, looking at a split zone, going with SF 12. But if you feel like you can make a finding of compatibility, that's where the Planning Commission was. If you're struggling with that, we can discuss the menu of options with the applicant and come back with something that's responsive to the board's concerns.
Supervisor Joly?
Just one more question for the edification of the neighbors who are listening in the neighborhood. Should this not get approved today, they, as a group, could come forward and propose a master plan amendment? Could they not to change the master plan designation and subsequently the zoning? I mean, they could proactively do that themselves if they had interest in doing that. Could they not?
This is Susan Pansky. Can I just address that? So I don't believe that the adjacent property owners would have the ability to propose a master plan amendment and a zone change on properties that they don't have an interest in. So my applicant, my client would have to be party to that modification if they were to request that.
Per the municipal code, the initiation of an amendment must be initiated by the Board of Commission, it says Board of Commission, through a resolution and the owner of real property may initiate an amendment for their property. So no, someone can't come in.
But it has to be the property owner.
It has to be the property owner or the board for initiation.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions of Susan or Heather or Hope? Heather, Hope and Susan, any questions? I think the sense, maybe I'm wrong here, and the board can correct me, but my sense is I think we want the Planning Commission to take a closer look at the compatibility argument. And you could go over that with Susan as well. I know, you know, she grew up here, she knows what's going on here. I think that that might be a way to solve things because what we see on these things, and we've been through this before, is okay, we make some change here, we'll assume it's going to happen when the tentative map comes in, then all of a sudden people forget what we did here today and the tentative map gets approved without a condition. So I get what the landowners, the adjoining landowners are saying, you know, do it today to make, at least to give them some certainty that there's going to be some consideration of a transition zone on that piece of property. I think, my sense is, unless the board tells me differently, is let's have the Planning Commission take a closer look at the compatibility argument and ask Susan if there's a way where, you know, we can hopefully play Solomon and solve the issue with the neighbors and also solve, you know, the economic issues with the developer. Is that all right? You don't want to say?
I think we would probably still make a motion to continue this item.
I think we could, that's fine. Motion or just do it. But motions are even better. I mean, clarity and transparency is always welcome.
I would move to continue this item and direct staff to work with the applicant to address the concerns that were brought up on the record today and bring this back at a future meeting.
Second.
There's a motion to add a, is that a full second or a tentative second? Huh? Anybody want to think about that? Stacy, Chief, I'm thinking.
Well, I mean, I'm okay with a motion. I mean, I'm just, I, I think I would just say refer it back to the Planning Commission because it's going to have to go back to the Planning Commission. That was my only struggle with that.
Motion again was put, sent it back.
Doesn't have to go back to them.
Could just fix it here. All right, all right.
It doesn't have to, okay.
All right. On the motion, discussion. Here you can see none, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Go. Well, we don't because we don't allow anybody else to publicly comment. That's the reason. So, you know, otherwise, that's one of these problems with this. I mean, it is hard to get, it is just hard, let me put it like that. So on the motion, further discussion? I don't see any. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Tell me it's an aye. I didn't have my computer up here. All right. Hope, put your Solomon hat on and get it fixed if you can. You're smiling, but listen, we all realize what the distinction is here. And it is, and it is unusual that, you know, the master plan says one thing and we usually like to, the master plan is a guiding document. We don't like to go around that and we're being asked to do that now. So I want the neighbors to know, this is not just a slam dunk easy thing to do and they wouldn't want it done to them. So, you know, let us take a look at this thing. We understand what the concerns are. We'll see if we can fix it. All right, all right. Anything else on this item? Okay. Poke my yes button there. Is it open still? Okay, all in favor, signify by saying aye. We voted already. Mine doesn't show the vote. Okay, all right, all right. Let's move on then to the next item. This is 24 Charlie. This is discussion of possible action regarding bill number 108 on second reading. Supervisor Bonkowski?
On items 24C and 24D, NRS 281A.420 requires me to disclose a conflict of interest and abstain from voting when I have a disqualifying conflict. In my private commitment, I am a partner in the real estate brokerage firm of NAI Alliance, Carson City. In that capacity, I currently represent the three principals of Silver Oak Development Company in their roles as principals of another business entity involved in a different project. Because I have a continuing and substantial relationship with those individuals, I have a disqualifying conflict on items 24C and D and I will not be participating or voting on those items.
All right. Any other disclosures? Anybody? All right. On item 24C, has there been any changes since the first reading?
No, sir.
No changes? Nobody came in? All right. Motion's in order to approve bill number 108.
I move to adopt ordinance number 2020-8.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. On the motion discussion, here you can see none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
One abstention, four, yes, one abstention. Right? Did I get that right? Yeah. Okay, all right.
My motion, Stacy second.
I look like I've locked out here. So if Desi's around, that's all right. We'll just deal without the electronics on my end. Okay, let's take up the next one, 24 Delta. This is discussion of possible action regarding adoption of bill number 109 on second reading and ordinance permitting Silver Oak Plan Unit Development. and ordinance permitting Silver Oak Plan Unit Development so as to expand the boundary of block DD on property zone, single-family, 12,000, planned unit, development located south of Silver Oak Drive and east of Sienna Drive. The record will reflect the disclosure made by Supervisor Bonkowski in the prior motion, in the prior agenda item on this item. Tell us where we are on this one.
No changes, sir.
No changes? Okay. Anybody want to weigh in? Motion's in order to approve bill one, to adopt bill number 109 by ordinance, by resolution, rather, excuse me.
Yeah, I move to adopt on second reading, ordinance number 2020-9.
Second.
There's a motion and a second on the motion discussion. Here you can see none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Those abstained?
Aye.
Four to one. Four ayes, one abstention. Okay. All right. Let's take up item 24 Echo. This is discussion of possible action regarding the adoption of bill number 110 on second reading and ordinance changing the zoning from public regional to multifamily apartment on property located at 3110 Bud I Way. I hope you want to take us through this. It's 6.5, four or five acres of the 7.1, 7.8. Tell us what's going on here, please.
Sure. This is the second reading. There are no changes from the original request to rezone this portion of this property to multifamily apartment. I'm happy to answer any specific questions the board may have.
All right. All right. Questions, Hope? Anybody? All right. Motion's in order.
I move to adopt ordinance number 2020-10.
There's a motion and second by Supervisor Barrett on the motion. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Carried unanimously. All right. Let's take up the District Attorney's issue on the hemp.
No. Not on that one. Can we take a quick break?
Yes, we can. But we're going to be in recess for about 10 minutes. There's a lot of pressure going on in here, so we'll get, we're back in 10 minutes.
All right, we're going to call the media board supervisors back to order. We're on item number 25. This is for the district attorney's discussion of possible action regarding litigation relating to the post hemp cultivation on Carson City open space property at 4900 Carson River Road. We have esteemed Jason Woodbury here, who's the district attorney of the greatest city in Nevada. Welcome. Good to have you here. Tell us what's going on.
Thank you, Mayor. Jason Woodbury, Carson City District Attorney. For the record, as this board is aware, Carson City was named as a defendant in litigation initiated by Tahoe Hemp LLC. The subject of that litigation is the efforts of that company to begin the cultivation of hemp on open space property owned by Carson City. In accordance with this board's direction, my office has been defending that litigation. And in the course of our representation, we have identified several counterclaims that we believe it would be in the best legal interests of the city to assert. And now is the appropriate time to assert those if they are going to be asserted. So this item requests specific authorization to proceed with the assertion of those counterclaims. In addition, mainly for the sake of efficiency, my office is requesting a general authorization to do, take all required and appropriate legal actions to defend and prosecute the best interests of the city. So we can do that, including specifically the initiation of an appeal in the event there is an adverse judgment against the city. So there's no confusion. It's obviously certainly our intent to maintain constant communication with the board. And if there was any kind of critical decision that was appropriate for open and public deliberation and action, we would be bringing that to a meeting. This is more of a convenience for us in the event that we have to take some quick action under a deadline. And it's not always convenient to convene a special meeting of the board to authorize that action. So this will lay the record for us to go ahead and defend and prosecute the litigation as we need to.
Very good. Questions to the DA, district attorney, anybody? I think we understand what's going on.
Yes.
I'd just like to ask what you ask our traffic manager. Is this a power grab?
No. Certainly not.
This is third branch of government is taking over, man. All right. Questions in order.
So if I'm understanding the documentation now, is the Gerard family has, is now a party to the lawsuit because that was one of the requirements in the judge's answer to us last time? Is he a willing participant that he wants to be a part of this? And I guess I'm just concerned as why he didn't talk to the city in the first place about wanting to do a sublease. I'm just a little...
Well, that's a very...
I've always liked him and always thought he was a great partner with the city. So I'm just trying to find out what's going on here.
Well, that's a very legitimate concern. There were some preliminary discussions between the city and Gerard and Tahoe Hemp. I'll just say candidly that when Tahoe Hemp didn't get the answer that they liked, they went ahead and unilaterally went on to the property and started to do what they want in spite of the fact that the city had said no. And, you know, it's Gerard's use. It's Gerard is the entity that leases the property. So in one sense, the actions of Tahoe Hemp are the actions of Gerard. And I'll just say that. It is a fair question to wonder about that.
I got Brad to go there. Stacy, sorry.
And Jason, just to follow up on Lori's question, you said that initially there were conversations between Tahoe Hemp, Gerard, and the city. At what point did those conversations end or have they ended? I guess what I'm trying to ask is, have we gotten any feedback from Gerard or from State Lands on their inclusion in this lawsuit?
We've had conversations with legal representatives for both Gerard and for State Lands. The nature of those conversations probably would be best shared confidentially in detail, but I can certainly tell you in general that they, not surprisingly, would prefer not to be part of the litigation. And that has been part of the conversation we had with them. And certainly, we wouldn't, it's not our choice to bring them in. All we said to the judge was, if you're going to fully litigate this question, these people need to be parties because they have an interest in the property. And the judge agreed with us on that point.
Feel free to stop me at any point here. Just looking at this from the 30,000-foot view, which is the information that we have, it just appears to me that on Gerard's part, that it's, it seems a little short-sighted. I just don't see the reward for the risk in this particular situation. So I'm just not, I'm not clear, and maybe we'll never know why this all happened in the first place. It just doesn't seem to be well thought out.
Well, I like to quote our mayor whenever you start talking about litigation. When it gets to litigation, somebody's going to win and somebody's going to lose. And it is short-sighted to not consider what happens if you're on the losing end of that.
Yeah, I have a comment and a question. I guess a disappointment for me is that the city has had a great relationship over the years, this whole community with that, with that family, the ownership of that family over the years, the sale of the land, the agreement that we entered into. And I guess it's just disappointing to me that there wasn't a greater effort at communicating what the families, the Gerard family's desire was ahead of time before engaging into a contract that a logical person would have assumed would have been somewhat controversial, knowing the conservative nature of our community. I mean, I'm not asking you to comment. It's just, it's, as Brad said, I think it was kind of short-sighted, and it's too bad. It's disappointing. But my question is how, and I know there are a lot of intricacies with this, but how long are you potentially seeing this drag out? I mean, how, do you see a quick resolution? Do you see it, you know? I mean, and I understand you're just, it's a guess. I get that.
I will tell you, my opinion on that has evolved over time. Initially, it looked like, you know, I mean, it's contracts, it's documents, and I felt like a fairly quick resolution was likely in that case. I no longer think that. There are, a lot of what's going to be at issue in the litigation is, who knew what, when, and what information was shared? When was it shared? Things like that. Because from our perspective, it's pretty simple. When this contract reserved the right for Gerard or a third-party designated to engage in, quote, agriculture, hemp wasn't on anybody's mind. It wasn't legal at that point in time. It wouldn't be fair to say that anybody even had thought of that. But, you know, that's the question, or that's at least one of the questions involved in that is, once it evolved to where hemp became legal, you know, was there an understanding on the part of everybody that now we're going to allow that in the contract? And that's just really one sub-question of this. So the short answer to your question is, at this point, we're going to have to have a lot of depositions. We're going to have to exchange a lot of documents, emails, letters, communications. And in order to try to figure this out, it's going to be very expensive for everybody.
With the same caveat that Supervisor Budkowski issued, if, you know, tell me to shut up if I go farther than you'd like me to, is there still opportunity without getting a foul of the courts or the law or judicial ethics to continue discussions with the Gerard family directly outside of the lawsuit? I mean, is there a potential way to resolve it that way? Or is that off the table?
You know, no, it's not off the table unless this board were to tell me, we're not interested in any further discussions, and you haven't told me that yet. So, you know, we're open to it, and we'll certainly, any definitive proposal that we're happy to take to this board to consider. I have not yet heard any definitive proposal, period, and certainly no definitive proposal that doesn't involve our agreement to allow cultivation of hemp on that property. So we haven't brought anything to the board. But we'll bring to the board whatever, and we're willing to participate in good faith in discussions. But I think our position has been pretty clear about this.
Well, and certainly, the board's position has been clear about hemp. So, thank you.
Other questions to the DA? Okay. Are we ready for a motion? We'll take a motion. Supervisor Bagwell.
I move to authorize the district attorney's office to take any and all legal action in its representation of the city in this litigation matter, including, without limitation, the filing of any counterclaims, the filing of any appeal in the event of an adverse judgment, and the filing of all necessary legal papers.
There's a motion and a second on the motion discussion. Here you can see, none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post nay, carry, unanimous. Thanks. Go do the work of the city. You do a good job, man. Let me tell you that. We're lucky to have you, and people should know that. They should know that. We're lucky to have this DA, and we're lucky to have this sheriff. Good. All right. All right. Well, we got the, you guys got to stay out.
Bringing the big end here.
Holy smokes. All right. Make sure you distance yourselves.
Yes, sir.
All right, we're going to take up the item with respect to the city manager's employment contract, which calls for an annual review, a performance review. Ms. McKenna, Melanie, you want to take us through and see if she should pack her bags or go get a loan?
What's that show that has the suitcases? Yeah, it's the suitcase inner-out. Yeah.
All right, go.
Good morning, Mayor, members of the board. The item before you is to review and evaluate the city manager's performance over the past year since the last review, which was done in June of last year in accordance with Section 4.1 of her employment contract. She was served with notice of this meeting on May 22. I'd like to point out that also, in accordance with Section 4.1, she is entitled to a merit increase should the rating be meets expectations or above. However, she has voluntarily waived that provision in her employment contract. I'd like to hand it over to the city manager at this time to go over the objectives that she's accomplished this past year.
Good. Thank you, Melanie. City manager.
All right.
All right.
I just have a few things to say before I start with the objectives.
All right, we've got a few hours.
It kind of sounds like an acceptance speech for an award, but here we go. So after two years in a pandemic, I'm not sure whose idea it was to throw that curveball in there, but we've almost gotten ourselves out of it. I'm still thankful to be given the opportunity to be the city manager. I'm also grateful to have Stephanie as my, sorry, deputy city manager. Nick always used to say that I needed a Nancy, but I think what he really meant was that I needed a Stephanie. Probably should have saved this part for the end. Sorry. So she has a high standard of excellence and has helped me to be a better city manager. I also want to recognize the staff in my, sorry. The staff in my office, Janet and Carol and the two Rachels for their hard work and dedication to the city and for helping me the last two years. I also want to thank Dan for keeping me out of trouble and for all of his words of wisdom. And lastly, I want to, many thanks to the directors, our elected officials, and their employees. Without them, none of these objectives would have been accomplished. So we're so lucky to have the employees that we have, and it couldn't have been more clear than during this pandemic. They really make us look good. And Stephanie and I were so impressed several times, you know, during the many EOC meetings that we went to, and I'm just proud to be a part of this great team. So now to the more boring stuff. All right. So the first objective was to maintain compliance with the fiscal year 20 budget and develop the fiscal year 21 budget in accordance with Carson City's financial and budget policies. So prior to the declaration of the emergency due to COVID-19 pandemic, the city was in great financial position with $9.4 million available for the capital improvement program. And an ending fund balance was budgeted at 8.3% for fiscal '21. The fiscal '21 budget was in its final changes when things started to take a nosedive with very short notice. And a lot of thanks to the finance department, they had to switch gears and start cutting. Adjusting the budget for an estimated $7 million shortfall, we reduced revenues and dropped the CIP by 6.8 million. In addition, we had to cut $1 million that we had planned for increases in department operating budgets in the general fund. Sherry, our CFO, is providing monthly financial updates to the board so that timely budget decisions can be made if and when they're necessary based on our current economic conditions. Onto the IT software implementation. DevNet, the property tax and appraisal system that went live, the assessor portion went live July of 2019, and the treasures portion just went live in May. On the Tyler tech...
Still alive?
Is it still? Yeah, it's kind of alive. It might need a resuscitation. So the financial, onto the Tyler technology piece, the ERP, the financials went live July 1 of 2019. EnterGov, the community development module, went live in November of 2019. The human capital and executime went live December 20 of 2019. Utility billing, they're still working on that. Estimated go-live is by the end of this year. And then the enterprise asset management software, we selected Lumen Ready Asset, and the contract will be brought to the board of supervisors after July 1. Onto the strategic plan. Let's see. In November 2019, city staff began the process of developing the...
Can I interrupt you?
Oh, sure.
Going back to the IT implementation, can you let us know just briefly which items still, we're still having, struggling with and, you know, we're working with the vendors or not working with the vendors to get those corrected?
I think we're still struggling definitely with DevNet. I think they were, there was something going on this week, and I think they were able to get over a little bit of a bump and go forward with that. There's still a lot of work to be done. I think a lot of things didn't, or they weren't able to transfer over from the ADS system into the DevNet system. So they're working on that. There may be a lot of manual entry on that. And I think the financials are going pretty good, Sherry, and...
So is DevNet planning to reimburse us for the cost of the manual input that their system couldn't accommodate?
I'm not sure where that's at, but I know that we have had the DA's office involved in some discussions.
Right. It just seems like if we're promised a product that will incorporate all of our existing data, and then it can't, then they should be bearing that cost.
And is that what our call is today on DevNet? I think I have a NACO call on the DevNet implementation. I'm not sure when that is, so. The EnterGov, last I talked with James Underwood and Lee, they were saying that was about at 85%. They've made a lot of strides in the last few months. And I think the rest of them are going pretty well. Payroll went pretty good. Human capital, second one.
The HR modules have been going really well. However, we're on hold until IT implements the update to Munis, which I expect either in the fall, late fall, early winter. And then we will resume the implementation of the performance review module. We are looking at a grievance module as well. But aside from that, everything's flowing into the system as it should be.
Also, I wanted to say, as each module has been implemented, you know, we've looked at what things worked, what things didn't work, and we made kind of a key adjustment by assigning a specific IT person to each module that is being implemented. And that's helped quite a bit, so, in that process. Back to the strategic plan. So our current plan was prepared with the help of an outside consultant, but we decided to try to do this in-house, leveraging the expertise of the city directors and the elected officials. Staff were asked to review the existing plan to determine what objectives have been accomplished, what objectives needed to be carried forward to the next plan, and what new objectives we needed to set. This information was presented at the city's annual board retreat to gather input and direction from the board. The next step is to solicit input from Carson City residents. We'll be putting that on our city website and asking for input. And after that, the draft plan will be developed and presented to the board of supervisors. There is a little delay on that due to the coronavirus. So next, I have work with the DA's office on the comprehensive revision to the municipal code. The DA's office completed an ordinance drafting manual that will guide the drafting of all the ordinances going forward. In addition, a tentative outline for the reorganization of Title I is complete, and this outline will help steer the structure of the entire municipal code. Next, once the community development department submits their proposed revisions to Title 17, Title 18, and the Title 18 appendix, which I'll talk about next, actually, the DA's office will review those proposed revisions for further edits before finalization and then finally presentation to the board. The next one was to begin the process of performing a master plan update. During the strategic planning process in 2019, the board determined that a review and update of Title 18, the zoning code, was a priority over an update to the master plan. So the community development department initiated a review of Title 18 with the planning commission, and they began public outreach back in 2019. They were able to have five workshops conducted with the planning commission, and the commission made recommendations to the board regarding one chapter of Title 18 at its last workshop. Review of that... Review of that chapter was scheduled to go to the Board of Supervisors for additional public comment and board comment. However, with, you know, the limitations as far as the public being able to be all in one room, that was put on hold for a little bit. So the Title 18 public workshops will resume when, probably when we go to Phase 3, and so that we can, they can participate in the discussion regarding the Title 18 changes. Next is to begin the process of creating the South Carson Street Neighborhood Improvement District, the NID. Public Works and the Community Development coordinated to create the framework for implementing the South Carson Street NID. Notification was sent to all the property owners, and they also held an informational meeting to explain the purpose of the NID. In early 2020, the board approved the proposed framework for implementing the NID assessment, but they delayed the implementation until fiscal 2022 in order to give staff more time to evaluate the status of the former NDOT parcels and how those part, those properties will factor into the NID assessments. The board, so to kind of get us through to fiscal 2022, the board allocated redevelopment funding to bridge that gap for the maintenance until the assessment will go out for fiscal 2022. Next was to review the base.
Nancy, can I ask you a question on that?
Yeah.
The, a couple of months ago, when we started talking about the NID, we thought that by this meeting, we would have an update on those NDOT parcels and, and the right of ways and the leases and all that. So obviously, we missed that deadline, but I'm just wondering where we are on that and when we see, when we might see that.
Thank you for the record, Stephanie Hicks, Deputy City Manager. It's a pretty big undertaking to go through each of those deed documents, and so we've been working with the district attorney's office with that. Priorities and, you know, things that have to come forward because of deadlines have, have superseded some of that, but we are working to be able to bring it to you hopefully next month.
Thank you.
That's why I have Stephanie. So the next one is review the base budget methodology to identify efficiencies and accurately reflect the needs of the departments and the elected offices. So the finance department works closely with department business managers to develop and review the annual budgets. For the fiscal 21 budget cycle, the departments were encouraged to thoroughly review each budget line item and reduce budgets where they had excess funding instead of just automatically rolling the budget amounts forward to the next year. However, due to our methodology of budgeting and significant cuts that were made in services and supplies during the last recession, no real reductions were made, probably just shifts around to different line items to where the, the budget was actually needed. Basically, finance rolls forward the services and supplies with no automatic increases each year, and the only time increases are given is when there's a contractual reason for that. So we're pretty strict on giving additional money. So the budget savings go towards capital equipment and improvements, so the directors are always encouraged to save money that in turn they can use for their capital needs. Next one is to perform a thorough review and update of the policies. And all policies and policy tech are reviewed each year. We did a complete revision update of the city's drug and alcohol policies. They are now in final review. And because we live in an ever-changing world, policies are constantly needing to be reviewed, revised, updated. It seems like we just get it one done, and then we have to revise it, so. And 2020 brought about some drastic changes on how the city operates due to the COVID-19. So we needed to develop a few policies in order to, to deal with, with that. So we developed the mandatory telemarketing policy, the Families First Coronavirus Response Act policy, and the COVID-19 Infectious Disease Control Policy. Next, work on Socrata to redesign, update the city's performance dashboard. Stephanie and I and IT met with our representatives from Socrata back in February to discuss the redesign and the update of the city's performance dashboard. Once we have finalized the strategic plan and have identified the performance measures that we want to put on the dashboard, then they will come out, they'll set us up with a project team, and we'll start building the performance dashboard and the various measures. Complete downtown parking study. The Transportation Division and Community Development coordinated to initiate the downtown parking study in 2019. They included parking data from both during and after the 2019 legislative session. The report was completed by the consultant in early 2020, and they will be bringing a presentation that summarizes that parking study in July, so next month. Look at the feasibility of expanding the BLS ambulance program. In July 2019, the BLM, the B, BLM, the BLS ambulance coverage was expanded to seven days a week, 12 hours a day. That's, and we also added two additional BLS employees. Prior to that, it was just a Monday through Friday, eight hours a day service. Going forward, the fire chief will continue to monitor the needs of that service, and they're also in the final stages of the master plan, which included evaluating the current ALS and the BLS service, and they'll include recommendations for the future. Open the rifle range. Yay! The city invested more than $800,000 for safety improvements to the range that, to ensure that the facility meets the National Rifle Association guidelines. In addition, the board during last year's budget funded a full-time range coordinator to oversee the operations and maintenance of the facility. The range officially opened on May 7th. Of course, it was delayed of the, because of the pandemic, so. On May 21st, the board approved a fee schedule for the range, and that will be effective July 1st. In May, staff completed the range reservation policy, and they're finalizing the standard operating procedures for that facility. Bring forth the agreement on, on Marlette. This July will be the halfway mark through the two-year water agreement with the state to purchase water from the Marlette system. The Truckee Water, Truckee Meadows Water Authority, or TMAO, is also looking to purchase water from Marlette. But before they enter into any, any agreement with the state that involves Carson City and Story County, they have requested that the state put together a water master plan followed by a rate study. We're currently working with TMAO on a memorandum of understanding between Story County and Carson City, and that's pending Story County's review, and hopefully will lay out the groundwork for any future agreement with the state. There's a lot of objectives. Begin, begin working on possible solutions for the state lands on South Carson Street. The city has been in discussions with the state over the past year and probably before that regarding that, that site. The discussions were primarily related to requesting the use of that property as a construction staging and storage area during the South Carson Street project. During those discussions, the state representatives mentioned that they didn't have any immediate plans to either sell the property for private, private development or to move forward with a future Nevada Department of Public Safety complex. So based on those discussions and being in the middle of the South Carson Street project, staff strategized to revisit that and continue talks with the state after the South Carson Street project is complete. The next one is bring the board a proposal on the 28-day motel exemption. The community development director gave a presentation on long-term stay motels at the board's annual retreat in February. And information, right now, we're looking for information regarding the number of long-term stay motel rooms that are claiming the exemption in relation to the total number of hotel motel rooms in Carson City. We requested that information from the CTA. So once that information is reviewed, the next step is to decide whether to eliminate the 28-day exemption from the transient lodging tax, require all motels to provide cleaning and linen service as required. I think I had NAC in there. It should be NRS. And, or just continue the current motel inspection program that, that we implemented a few years ago. And then work on finding additional funding for streets projects. Public Works staff coordinated with the DA's office to develop an ordinance to implement the 5 cent per gallon diesel fuel tax. This new revenue was approved at the June 4th Board of Supervisors meeting, and the collection on that should start on August 1st. The anticipated revenues from that new tax is estimated to be about $400,000 a year. Also, working with the Regional Transportation Commission, staff developed a pro-rata contribution developer agreement template that can be used to secure additional funding for development-related impact to the transportation system, including traffic control devices. This has generated about $66,000 in fiscal 20, and they're estimating around $150,000 to $250,000 for fiscal year 21. Public Works also gave a presentation on transportation funding options at the board's annual retreat. And based on direction from the board, Public Works staff met with a consultant to initiate the process of developing a scope of work to develop the different kind of funding mechanisms to fill the funding gap for the city's roadway system. That evaluation is tentatively planned to begin after the beginning of the new fiscal year. That's all I had on this current year's objectives.
We have questions of Nancy on those objectives that are discussed on that. Nancy, while you were going through this, it occurred to me that maybe we left one off that we haven't talked much about. That's the access through the Forest Service property on South Carson Street?
Yeah, we, we haven't talked about that for a while. Yeah, yeah.
Thank you for the record, Stephanie Hicks, Deputy City Manager. So as you recall, we did add that to our technical map corrections for the lands bill. We've actually been working with Senator Rosen's office on the language that they are moving forward with, and so that has continued to be included. However, in an effort to, because we just didn't know how long that timeframe is, we, we have been working with the Forest Service directly, and they've been amenable to providing us an easement in the interim. It's just a process that it will take, and with loss of real property manager, it's probably sitting a little on the back burner. But we have, we'll be moving forward with really getting a, a defined survey of that area and then going through their right-of-way process.
All right. I'm glad, that's one of those things where it could slip through, particularly when we're dealing with federal government. Time, time takes, so I'd appreciate if we put that on. I mean, I probably won't be here, but I think, you know, it's a big deal for the city to have access. We've tried to do that for the last 25 or 30 years, so finally it's happening. I know you folks will take care of it. Thanks. All right. Are there any questions of city manager? Anybody? All right. I know some of our department heads have asked me that they want to speak about it. You? I'm kidding you. Stephanie, Ms. Hicks.
Thank you, Mayor. Stephanie Hicks, Deputy City Manager. I just, I appreciate the opportunity and permission just to share a little bit about my experience of working with Nancy. I've had the pleasure of working with Nancy for the last four and a half years in my previous position as the real property manager. However, over the last five, or nine months, working directly with her, I've really come to know her and appreciate how fortunate we are to have her as a city manager. Nancy is a great leader because she's always looking out for the best interest of the city and its residents. She's responsive to citizen requests and concerns, and she's always looking for ways as to how we can improve our services and save money, very fiscally responsible for taxpayers' dollars. She's also not afraid to make hard decisions. We've had to make some necessary changes, and she's willing to address leadership needs. And I think that, that really does demonstrate what a great leader is. I don't need to tell you that as a former CFO, she has great experience in budget and finance, but I've been able to really see the significant asset that is for the city manager because she can take that and guide employees and operations to really be fiscally responsible and transparent in what we're doing, what efforts we're making in the city. Probably one of the biggest things that I appreciate about her is that she is professional and approachable. I have experienced, you know, in my interactions with her and with other staff members, department directors, elected officials, that there's definitely a level of respect that they have for Nancy. I think her growing up through the city and working at different levels in our, in our organization has really helped her to foster those relationships. And so she, she just really is there to listen to their concerns, and she makes every effort to address the issues that are brought before her. We have had a kind of exciting last four to six months with the pandemic and events that none of us were expecting. But Nancy has really continued to lead the city in a very calm and steady demeanor, which I think has just been, really has been a fortunate blessing for us because it's kept the city on even keel during such an unusual time. And I won't say that we haven't had our, oh my goodness, what's going to happen next, maybe not in those exact word moments. But it's, it's, I think it provides confidence to those of us who she's leading to see how her demeanor turns to this resilient, and she doesn't have to say it, but she just exudes the, we've got this, we can handle it, we've got it covered. And that really helps, I think, with, you know, calm anxieties of the unknowns that we have during these current times. So I greatly appreciate that and working with her. I just think, lastly, that I want to say that in everything she does, she really demonstrates that tone at-the-top management commitment that she's made that's part of our strategic plan. She's trustworthy, she's honest, and she's ethical. And she always tries to be consistent and fair in the decisions that she makes. She takes things to heart, and she's compassionate, and she really cares about the community and the people that she serves. So I'm very, I'm very proud to work for Nancy.
Very good. Somebody want to go next? Darren.
Thank you, Mayor. Board of Supervisors. I haven't been up here today, so I'm going to take a long time. Just kidding.
How about, you got till noon?
Yeah? Where's that two-minute, where's that two-minute switch? Yeah. Thanks, thanks for, thanks for allowing me to do this. Every word that I wanted to say Stephanie just mentioned, so this will actually be very brief. But I was trying to think of things that I haven't said maybe in the past and some differences there. And just, just doing a little reflecting on this. But, you know, it's, it's such a, it's such a wide-range responsibility position, and things, things are coming up all the time that you could really, really say are, are coming out of left field. And just love the ability that Nancy has of, of, of looking at each issue, looking at each topic, and being able to slow down. She's always telling me to slow down, Darren. Think about this, figure it out. And I, I really appreciate her consistency in the way that she treats people from the directors and, and across the board. And it just, it's just so valuable. And, and one thing that I've noticed that when I think about every, every other boss that I've ever had, Nancy is by far the most unselfish person that I've ever worked with. And it just really speaks to her character, and, and I like, I just love the opportunity to, to work with her and work for her. And so glad to have my job. Thank you.
Thank you, Darren. Okay. Nikki?
Nikki Aker, Director, Carson City Health and Human Services. I would echo what others have said, and what I would really add is, first of all, I, I wouldn't really say this has been very exciting, living through this. But I have to say that through this pandemic, you know, I've. through this pandemic, you know, I've shared an article that, what other states are dealing with as far as the non-support that public health professionals are getting from their, their city officials and the elected officials, and I have to say that Nancy has been very supportive through this pandemic. It's been, it's been really tough on the Health Department, and I can call Nancy at any, almost any hour. I don't bother her in the middle of the night, but I do call her on evenings and weekends with an issue that I have, and she is able to help me work through it and come to a solution that enables us to do our job, which I really appreciate. I really appreciate the support, allowing us to do our job through this, so thank you.
Who's next? Ms. Russell? Sherry? Dragon Lady?
So, my department says no a lot. That's kind of finance's job, and I am so proud to have the support of Nancy and Stephanie when something just doesn't seem right to me, and I go talk to them, and they are right there saying, yeah, you're right, that doesn't seem right. It's, it's great to have a boss that is fair and consistent, and to have the integrity to say, to stand up behind me and say, no, Sherry's right, that's not correct, we need to do it properly. You know, I used to audit the city in 2004, and Nancy and Nicker, they were the reason I came because I knew they had integrity, I knew they wanted things to be right, and she really does that with all of her decisions. So, I'm proud to work for her as well.
Sherry? Chief?
Sean Simon, Fire Chief. I think it's only appropriate that I follow the Finance Manager. I can verify that they do say no. The characteristics of a leader, I think the most important characteristic you can have is trustworthiness. You've got to be, you've got to have a sound mind, sound character. When you look for a city manager as a department head, I, I look for leadership and direction, but I also look for trust. And to quote Colin Powell, "Trust but verify," I would say that is absolutely Nancy's MO. She absolutely trusts her department heads to lead, she lets them lead, but she follows up, she verifies, and she makes sure we are all on track. From an emergency management and a large-scale emergency perspective, what you look for in an emergency manager or a leader in an emergency situation is what I've, what's always referred to as command presence, and command presence to me is a duck on the water. Calmness can be on the top of the water, but the legs are swimming like nobody's business below, and nobody else sees that, and that is what Nancy has provided, provided calmness, she's provided composure during an unprecedented time. We can, if you stick around government long enough, you will ride many, many recessions, and we have that down fairly well, all of our departments do, but to walk into a pandemic when there is nothing, there are playbooks, but there are no true playbooks for what we are doing, and she is, she has provided sound leadership, as has Stephanie, and as the rest of the team, and I can't say enough accolades. She is, she is always calm, she is always smiling even when she is mad. I think, I don't know if she has Irish in her, but I think that's the Irish side. But I appreciate her, and we have a great city manager in Nancy.
Thank you, Chief. All right, anybody else want to weigh in? I don't see any. We have questions of Nancy?
James Underwood with IT.
Okay.
Acting Mission Officer. So, I've only reported to Nancy for a couple of weeks now, but I really have worked with her on several occasions and find her to be always approachable. She trusts in your ability to do things and listens, and I really appreciate the opportunity that I have that she gave me to lead the IT department. I'm fully confident, from my perspective, and echo everyone's sentiments, that she's a great leader for the city, so.
Very good.
That's for now.
Did I cut you off, James? Sorry. Did I cut you off?
No, that was it.
Okay. Sorry.
I just second, second everybody else, and again, appreciate the opportunity to work for Nancy.
Very good. Anybody else? Daniel?
Mr. Mayor, you know, I wanted to take a quick opportunity just to echo everyone's sentiments in here, and, and, you know, you've, while you've heard, you know, this board has heard from, you know, every member of various departments that works for and under, you know, this management team's lead, you know, I want to provide a different perspective as her attorney, and, and maybe, you know, I can wrap it up best by saying that, you know, it's perhaps an infrequent thing for an attorney to say, you know, I, I want to go above and beyond just being your attorney and having this attorney-client, you know, relationship. I'm happy and proud to say that, you know, I enjoy working with her, and I consider her my colleague and my friend and not just my client, and she definitely exudes everything that everyone here has talked about today, and I'll just keep it short and wrap it up by saying that.
Anyone else? Board?
Excuse me, Mayor, this is Max from the Courts.
Oh, Max from the Court.
Can you hear me? Hi, Max Cortez, Court Administrator on behalf of the Courts. I just wanted to say that it has been a pleasure to work with Nancy. We have a very positive and professional working relationship, been able to work with her in her capacity as city manager, as well as when she was in the Finance Department, and it's been absolute pleasure. That's it. Short and sweet.
Very good. Thank you, Max. Okay. Melanie, do you want to say anything? Want to weigh in?
I have definitely seen a huge growth in Nancy over the past few months in her leadership. One of the most difficult competencies for any direct report to have, or for any supervisor to have, is the courage to confront their direct reports, and Nancy has taken the bull by the horn, so to speak, and has stepped up and has made the management changes that the city has needed to see, and I appreciate that as one of her direct reports because we don't like to see our teammates struggle, so when they're, when they are struggling, it takes a leader to step in and say, let me help you out, or change direction.
Anybody else? Let me say this. You know, I, my office happens to be in City Hall, so I watch, you know, I don't watch on purpose, but I, I'm around a lot, and, you know, I was talking to Nancy the other day, and there's, there's a whole lot, you know, we all get a lot of emails, we all get a lot of correspondence about, you know, things going on in the city, and every time I talk to her about something I know, and I don't expect her to know, she's got ahead of, she's ahead of the issue. And so, you know, it's a reminder to me, and I think it should be a reminder to all of us, is that, you know, maybe what the chief said is what you see of the duck on the top of the water, she's really paddling hard below the water, and I can tell you that, and I know, you know, you don't call her, Nikki, you don't call her in the middle of the night, but I can tell you, she tells me she's up all night worrying about some of the things that are going on in the city. That's what a good city manager does. We worry about doing our job in a wonderful way, so, you know, I can't think of anything I would ask Nancy to do that she hasn't done, period, so that's my sense. I kid her about, you know, bringing her suitcase, but I don't, I don't for a minute believe that, Nancy, so, you know, that's my two cents. Brad?
Thank you, Bob. As I do every year, I'm just going to point out that I really don't like this process. I'd rather have one-on-one meetings with Nancy so that we can go into detail about what, what we think she's accomplished, what, where we feel that she could improve, but this is the, the system that we have, so I'll deal with it the best I can. I think the point that I'd like to make about Nancy is that we've been very fortunate now with our last two city managers. When we hired Nick, we needed a personality that could really shake everything up and, and kind of start a lot of our systems over from scratch, and that served its purpose at the time, and then we went through a transition, and we need that steady leadership, not to rock the boat anymore, but to make sure that the boat is headed in the right direction and is avoiding all the snags in the river. So, I think that that is actually Nancy's strength, that she provides that steady leadership. I did sit down with Nancy, and I went through all of her job responsibilities on the evaluation privately with her, and this is the part that I don't like. Our evaluations are very subjective, and so my evaluation of Nancy is that she meets my expectations, but that doesn't convey to the public, or to the rest of the board members, or to staff, or maybe not to Nancy, where I think she's at in her job performance, because to me, that's about the highest recommendation that you can get from me. That's a solid, you know, seven out of 10. In order to get an eight, nine, or 10, you'd basically have to be able to walk on water. So, you know, I just want to relay that, you know, my evaluation meets expectations is actually maybe somebody else's eight, nine, or 10, and I appreciate the job that you're doing. I think that you're growing into the job well, coming from a position of not having the experience. You have addressed all of our concerns when we express them, you do follow up, and you're right where I want to see you, and I can't ask for any more than that. So, thank you.
Anybody else want to weigh in? Lori, go.
So, it's a shining example to see all of your employees tell me what a great leader you are. Sorry, I have just a little something in my throat here, but the best I can say is a heartfelt thank you. Truly, thank you.
All right.
And she, this year gets an above expectation from me.
Same, same here. John, Supervisor Barrett?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Two of the toughest things, or three of the toughest things about leadership is if you know you've done your homework, if you don't know, you're honest about it. Nancy often knows, almost always, which is really tough, but when she doesn't know, she just says so, and I'll find out. Secondly, one of the strongest characteristics she exhibits that I didn't frankly know whether she would or not, is when she needs to be tough, she can be tough. We had a personnel matter arose rather recently, that was a tough one. I questioned her about it when she told me what was going on, but she's the boss, in the sense that we hire her, and she deals with everybody else in this room and beyond, and she has a reason, she gave them to me, and I accept them. When those kinds of things came up, come up, she doesn't hesitate, she takes action, which is a real strong thing of leadership. The third thing, and one that I really admire, is, is everyone has said, she's trustworthy. I'm not always trustworthy, but I try as much as I can, and I can learn from her, and that's enough said. She'll, she'll do well for this city, and she has done.
Very good. Chief?
I guess it's my turn.
Old Chief.
Yeah, old chief, new chief. You know, I, I, I listened to Nancy compliment her staff, and certainly the city staff deserves that credit, but you, you don't get that performance unless you have a leader who can, can set the pace, and as Stephanie said, set the tone at the top, and I appreciate that very much in Nancy. You know, one of the things that I think is often overlooked but expected, certainly by our citizens, is, is competence. I, I don't think we talk about that enough. You know, you have an expectation that a person in a job is competent, but that's not always the case, and I guess what I, I'd like to add, in addition to what everyone else has said about Nancy, is that ability to have that quiet competence that gives people the feeling that, yes, she can lead, but she can lead because she has the skillset to be able to do that, and, and I think that's very important. It's important for our community to know that we're paying you to do a job, but that you do that job with quiet competence, and they should understand that the value they're getting out of that is, is impressive, in my opinion. I, I impressed with the way you dealt, and the rest of the city dealt with this coronavirus and our budget shortfalls, so from my perspective, it's above expectations as well, and, and thank you for your work.
Anybody else want to weigh in here? I don't, I don't see any. You know, Melanie, instead of having a board resolution on, I mean, we could have that on the, the, you know, performance measures for the next year, but I'm wondering if it wouldn't be more advisable on, you know, whether it's outstanding, or if it meets expectations or whatever, if each board member just went around and said what they thought, and then we take care of that, and then we'll take a motion on the, on approving or not approving what she's got planned for the next session, next year. Does that work? Not?
I would need a consensus, though, on what her overall rating is from the group, and then you could set the objectives.
All right. Somebody want to try a motion, or you want me to try? Go, Lori, go.
I move to designate the city manager's overall performance rating as above expectations.
There's a motion and a second on a motion discussion. Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed nay, carried. Nancy, thank you very much on behalf of this community. Thanks for growing up here, thanks for doing a good job. I mean, this is good stuff, and I know you work your tail off, you work your brains out, and Stephanie's out there with you guys, you know, doing everything. It's what makes this city run well, and, you know, we get, despite what goes on nationally, we get a lot of accolades at Carson City about things that have been done well here. You know, the most recent one that came by is where the greenest city in Nevada. I mean, those things you don't really think about, but we get those. So, you know, well done, I'm voting yes on this one, so. Anybody else? Do it. Got a vote?
Yes.
Got a vote? All right. I'm always losing the vote. All right. All right, let's take a vote on the performance for the next year. You okay with the?
The items that are listed?
Yeah.
Is there anything we want to add?
Yeah, I'd like to add some things.
Go ahead.
If you mind, thank you. You know, I think, as the mayor suggested, it might not be a bad idea to put that Forest Service access just on the objective, so we don't, so we don't lose sight of it, I'm not saying we will, but this kind of immortalizes it. The other thing I'd like to see, and I'll leave it to you to craft what this looks like, but I, you know, one of the concerns I have as, as a former city employee and now as a board member, when we do our retreats and set our strategic priorities, is that thing that sometimes people fall into where it gets stuck on the shelf and not looked at, and I, I really want us, in order for a strategic plan to be meaningful, and the steps in it to be meaningful, it has to be kept in the forefront, whether that be a regular agenda item or semi-regular agenda item. I would like to see something along those lines so that we're not losing sight of that, and that it keeps it not only in front of our eyes, but in front of the public's eyes as to what we have determined as a board is, is a priority for this community. So, I'd really like to see that crafted in a way that, that there's regular updates and report on progress on those items in the strategic plan. I'm, I'm open for interpretation from the other board members on what they'd like to see with that.
Brad? Oh, sorry, I'm sorry. Stacy?
You have a comment on that?
Yeah, I would, I would agree with Stacy. That's, you know, one of the items in the eight years that I've been here that has been very difficult, is trying to tie the individual agenda items back to why we're doing it, you know, whether that's the master plan or any other guiding document. So, instead of, you know, we have on here our strategic goal, but it's, it's kind of vague. It would be really nice if it was more specific, you know, we could put the reasoning, more specific reasoning, that this agenda item would further that goal. So, I, I agree with Stacy's suggestion.
And, and I don't want to make it more burdensome on staff, because I know that these agenda reports take time to prepare, and, but, but to Brad's point, I, I don't think it'd be a bad idea if we articulated that when the presentation is being made. It's, it's literally two sentences, and if we were It's literally two sentences, and if we articulated, it's one of the ways we can keep it active of it in everybody's mind. So that's just my two cents worth. And the last one, two more I have. One is continue to search for and advocate for COVID reimbursement or lost revenue, which I know is largely out of your hands, but to the extent that you can do it. And finally, when I signed onto the board or got elected, I don't know if it was because there was an assumption that, being a 30-plus-year city employee, that I would be able to pick things up right away, but there's a little bit of a lost feeling coming into an elected position. I think it would be really helpful, and we had brought this up at our first session that I had back in January of 19, or February of 19, to develop some kind of an orientation for newly-elected people, especially board members, on how all of this works, like Board of Supervisor 101. I know a lot of that is incumbent upon the people who run to get up to speed, but there are just some things that unless you understand the inner workings of government, you don't know the questions to ask. And I think it would be tremendously helpful to have a session for new board members that sort of bring them up to speed, so that when they sit here and vote, they have a little bit of background, and they're not having to learn as they go, although there's always going to be some of that, Lord knows. So that's it for me.
Good comment.
Thank you.
Good comments. Anybody else want to weigh in? All right, we'll take it. Oh, John, Supervisor Barrett.
Thank you. First of all, I want to echo what Stacy said. I wasn't lost the first year since I had covered this body before that for the local newspaper, but by the same token, there's always surprises, there's always things you didn't know and didn't expect. Secondly, I have a concern, and I'll call it, Stephanie earlier talked about our city manager being transparent, that's excellent. I have a concern about transparency, and that's not really a surprise since I came out of the media, but I'm not talking about that. One of the things with constituents is, we all get these, they don't always know exactly, as would a new board member not know exactly, what they're concerned about, but they call, they give a general, ah, we need this, we need that. But one of the things I've consistently heard in the nearly four years I've been involved is, why weren't we notified, etc. So I would like the city manager and the folks that she assigns to look at how wide our scope is when, say zoning, or any of these other things. We heard it today, as a matter of fact, on this southeast Carson project. I've heard it regarding the matter up near the waterfall. I hear it almost, not every time, but 40% of the times that people come to me, they say, well, I didn't know about this. It's partly their duty to inform themselves, and I wish citizens did a better job of that, which is why I spent my life covering government for the media. But it would be really good if we looked very strongly. And I know there's a twofold way that people who are on staff approach this. I was on staff in state government in another state when I was much younger, and one thing is, you don't always want to hear from constituents, but you're going to anyway. So we need to let them know ahead of time and inform them if we can. So I'd like to see us do that going forward. And, let's see, I had a final item here. Oh, yeah. I've been very concerned all the time I've lived here, a good number of years now, and I love it here, they'll plant me in the ground here, or scatter my ashes, whichever it is. Carson City is home, it's a wonderful place. We are rather uneven about what I call code enforcement. We're not eager to do code enforcement all the time, and I don't know why that falls through the cracks at times, but it does. So I'd like to see us get a more cohesive policy on code enforcement. That's enough for me.
Anybody else want to weigh in? Go.
Just as a cleanup measure, there's two items on the list currently that need to come off. One is create the South Carson Street NID, and the other is open the rifle range. So I assume that we're going to give you direction to continue with the list, but those two items need to come off, and then adding the items that the other members have spoken about.
I think I have those, the rifle ranges off for this next year, and then the NID was, just to implement the NID for fiscal 2022.
Got it? All right, anybody else?
On the public outreach, so just a discussion on that, maybe you want to just say enhance public outreach as a goal, so that it's encompassing to... I know that we send notices to people and we follow the law on all of the requirements, but if there was any way that a broader outreach could occur, and I had talked to Darren a little bit earlier, I really like when we have major projects. We used to, sometimes we go to Fuji Park, and we just put out a broad-spectrum notice that gives the public the front-end opportunity to comment about things, so that we can potentially mitigate or meet some of their needs early on in the process. And so any opportunity we can do to, so I just call that enhance public outreach, maybe as a general goal, that you could design some ideas, it would be wonderful. Thank you.
Anything else?
Sorry, and then on the updating on the strategic plan, on the Park and Rec Commission, we have a wonderful document that we get that shows the activity we've taken, and it kind of lines it out to say, on this such-and-such-a-date, one of the strategic goals for the Park and Rec Commission occurred at this Board of Supervisors meeting. And I really enjoy that on the Park and Rec, to be able to look back at our year and say, hey, we got goal number two, goal number four, goal number six, and here is the agenda item that met that. So maybe coordinate and see if the other board members would be interested in that methodology, because I do think it's wonderful to come back and see that. So maybe just a quarterly, when you're doing your IFC updates for us, maybe there's a strategic goal you could add in that comment period that says, we hit number, again, these are the ones we accomplished in your report when you give us that. Just an idea, because I really like Stacy's thought and everyone else to keep the strategic plan alive. Thank you.
Anything else? All right, let's try this. Let's take a motion to approve the, or performance measures for the next year with the changes suggested by the board members in this meeting today. Motion, second. On the motion discussion.
Yeah, Mayor.
Yeah, Mayor.
I made it. Okay. On the motion, all in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Thank you very much. Thank you, Nancy.
I just want to say, thanks for bearing with the new emotional Nancy.
Go home and unpack.
I just want to say, I'm a little over 50, and there's no other explanation needed.
All right, we got it.
I do want to thank everybody for all their kind words. That means way more to me than anything in any type of financial compensation, so.
Very good. All right. Listen, there's nothing wrong with that. It shows you care. Nothing wrong with that, man. All right, nothing wrong. We don't do enough of that in this world, sensitivity. All right, let's go to item number 27. This is the last item, except for the Board of Supervisors. This is on the COVID-19 stuff. Who's going to do this? Gene? Genie? And Nikki? Okay. Good morning to each of you. Get enough sleep?
What's sleep?
No sleep, all right. Tell us what you see going on out there.
All right, good morning, everyone. Genie Freeman for the record. It feels kind of like status quo when it comes to responding to COVID, and yet there's nothing status about the quo. So when we look at what's happening, we are seeing that we're having some increases in the number of cases that are occurring. The vast majority of our cases are connected to other positive cases, whether they be in the same household or in the same workplace. We are still seeing that there are cases that are not connected to anything, so we are finding that people are picking it up in the community, whether that means that they're at a store where they come into contact with somebody that they were unaware of, or they're at an event with somebody who may be asymptomatic and never shows. We do our investigation process, we continue to do our community-based testing where we're out doing events. We did an event earlier this week where we partnered with another agency, the Nevada Health Centers, to offer the testing in the community, because that's the health service that that community is familiar with, and so we're doing everything we can to partner with a variety of different agencies across the region. In Carson City and across the Quad Counties, we're seeing that it seems like more of our cases in the last few weeks have been those who are in their younger years, in the teens, twenties, and thirties. There's no rhyme or reason behind that. We do everything we can with our investigations to try to see if there's some sort of event or some sort of situation that may have increased that. I know several weeks ago, actually over a month ago, Washoe County reported that they were seeing an increase in cases as a result of Easter celebrations. We do those same kinds of investigations, and we aren't at this point able to say that there's anything connecting, you know, any Memorial Day celebrations or anything like that. But those investigation processes do depend on the public when they are positive, giving us the information about where they've been, and what they know that they've been in connection with, or where they have visited, and so forth. We absolutely have some workplace spread that has occurred in different environments, and we're working with those different employers to make sure that they have all the information that they need about cleaning and sanitizing, and how to protect their employees. As you can see, I was wearing my mask, my face covering today when I was in here, and even in our own department, when we have our meetings in our conference room, we social distance as much as we can, but the face coverings are a requirement for our staff, and we're doing everything we can. Very good. We're doing everything we can to make sure that we're being protected as well, and continuing to put that messaging out there. We are excited to report that on Monday, our two CDC Foundation positions that we were awarded by the federal government started, and so they're going through their initial training to be investigators and contact tracers to support the area. We have a wonderful young woman, Tori Dunlap, who is a recent Masters of Public Health graduate from University of Nevada Reno, and she has her Masters of Public Health in Epidemiology with an undergraduate degree in Microbiology. And then we have Jan Marshall, who is a retired registered nurse, and she lives in our area, and she spent many years down in Los Angeles when the HIV epidemic began, pandemic as well, and did a lot of contact tracing at that point in time. Both of them have completed their Johns Hopkins contact tracing training, as well as the ASO training that we require of anybody who's going to be working in those positions. So we're excited to have them on board, and we'll be seeing more people that we'll be hiring to assist with that once our grants have come in and been signed off and executed and approved through the board and stuff. Questions?
Very good. Questions? Gene? Genie? You know, it seems to me that in Carson City, we are kind of bumping along pretty well flat, I think, in number of cases and number of recoveries we go through. But I think it's worthwhile telling the public that, you know, we're not out of this yet, and we got to stay focused if we're going to get out of it, and that means social distancing and masking is terribly important. I mean, I know we all see it, we go around and we see people who are not doing the social distancing and the masking. Remember, when you're being served by a retailer, or by somebody out there who's wearing a mask, you're doing them an honor by wearing your mask as well, so that both people are being protected. So my message is, you know, it's difficult. I don't like wearing it, it's hard to breathe, hard to talk, and all that, but it is terribly important for our community that regardless of what else is going on anywhere else, that we do our part to mask and social distance, because we're going to be living with this stuff, I think, for quite a long time, maybe through the first stages of whatever this pandemic brings us. But it sure seems to me like, you know, we're going to be dealing with this one way or the other, maybe on a smaller scale. I'd ask folks to please take a look at your practices, your social distancing and your masking practices. I mean, what brings it to mind is, and I'm not going to mention names, but I went into an establishment the other day, and they wanted to shake my hand, which I appreciate, but I had to tell them, you know, you can't do that. I mean, obviously, you know, if you're a family member and stuff like that, you can't. But it is important that we, that our business owners and our community here remember that the pains we take now are going to pay dividends later, and so the message is, let's all redouble our efforts to do what we can to slow this virus down and keep our community going just wonderfully, okay?
Yes, you're correct, Mayor, and I believe Supervisor Barrett's mentioned it before, that the reason you wear a mask is partly to protect you, but the majority of it is to protect other people from you. And I appreciate that handshaking and the social distancing. I'm a recovering hugger, so I've gone through my treatment program so that I no longer hug people, and that's been a very difficult type of process for somebody who is rather physical when I'm social, with interactions with people that I am close to and so forth, or friends. And when we think about those dynamics, we are going to be with this for a while, that's part of the reason why our department's also setting the stage and preparing for the upcoming flu season, and we've been collaborating with the state to prepare to have some enhanced flu outreach and greater access to the vaccine, and have more of the vaccine available, and to be doing more events, because we're also trying to prepare to not have our healthcare system overwhelmed if we see an increase in COVID at the same time that we're seeing an increase in flu season. That will overwhelm our healthcare system, so we are in the process of putting that together so that we can be ready, and to push out more events, and to collaborate with more of our partners. We do, Carson City, as you mentioned before, it's a great city, and the departments in this city are fantastic. We are looked at, our agency is looked at as a leader in what we do in outreach with the flu events that we do as it is, but we're going to push even more, because we need to make sure that even if we get a 10% increase in the number of people who are vaccinated against the flu, it does provide us with an opportunity to reduce that surge that can be happening, and that we experience every year during flu season. So if there was anything on top of that surge, we could potentially be in trouble, and so we're doing what we can to make sure that we don't get into that trouble.
I want to repeat that. Anything on top of that? Repeat that, Gene.
Yeah, anything on top of what we already see, it's going to put us into trouble with our healthcare system.
If that's not a bell enough, if that's not ringing a bell hard enough, I don't know what does.
So I'm, we see that surge every year on a light flu year, and it was actually just two years ago, in 2018, that we were seeing such a surge in the number of flu cases, that we were already having regional conversations about what we would do for alternate care sites, and expanding that into tent environments where people could be cared for when it comes to those challenges associated with the flu. And that was in what was considered a moderate year, not even a high year, and so if we were to see a mild year, and/or even a moderate year, and something like a surge in COVID with the respiratory issues that sit around that, we're going to be in trouble, so we're going to do what we can to try to prevent that.
Very good.
Could I piggyback on that? This morning, I was watching the news, I'm a inveterate news junkie, which I've tried to bring myself not to do, but I have been watching very carefully, and Nevada keeps being mentioned as one of the states where cases are on the rise. But this morning, some news person woke up, and what they put on was, there are 18 cases where hospitalizations are on the rise, and Nevada isn't in that group. So what's being said here is really important. If your healthcare system continues to function well because it isn't overwhelmed, you're in much better shape. So thank you for saying that. We need to stay there and bring it down, not let it go back up.
All right.
And Mayor, if I can just add to your message, I think it's very important that people realize that we're still in Phase 2, and we need to practice that the face coverings, the social distancing, and those other preventive measures to be able to move to Phase 3. You know, we need to do our part as Carson City to be able to help move us to Phase 3. And then I also wanted to, I had thanked Nancy for the support during this pandemic, but I also want to extend that thank you to the board. Like I had mentioned, there's some, you know, there's some disheartening things going on around the country that is happening to public health directors and health officers, but I am very thankful that you all support what we're doing.
You know, public health is, you and I have talked about this before, public health is one of those... is one of those soft issues in town. It's not like building a road or a building or whatever else. And so it's hard to, it's hard to say public health is a big deal. I mean, even I went through that when I was first mayor. But when you, when you see a pandemic come, you're automatically saying, man, I should have paid more attention during those tabletop exercises. I should have done this, I should have done that. You know, so maybe we're finding out as a nation, and definitely as a community, what public health really is. It's not just something that's icing on the cake. It's the ground level, it's the ground level safety of your community if we can deal with these things. And, you know, so far, as you've mentioned, and you and Jeanie have mentioned, we've done a good job of that, at least I think we have, that's my sense out there. Keep it up. I don't want you folks to lose sleep because you don't perform in the morning, but I understand that. But, you know, it's good to know that you're losing sleep because this is that big of a deal. So anyway, that's where it is. We'll see where it goes here from here. Okay?
Mr. Mayor, I once wrote an article for the local paper where I said, I interviewed David Bugley, and he said, sleep is overrated. I don't know if that's true, but he was talking about all the work that he and Eleanor do. So thank you for losing sleep for us.
And if there's things that you think we should be doing, as we always say, if there are things that you think we should, as a board or as a community, should be doing, let us know. I mean, like talking about masks and social distancing, if you need, if you think we need to ramp that up, let us know because we can, you know, we all have contacts in this community. And, you know, it's not all code enforcement, it's us just doing our, you know, it's like my doctor tells me, we're going to be all right if we behave ourselves. We're going to be all right if we behave ourselves. And so that's the message today. Let's behave ourselves. We'll get through this. We've got great people in this community. Let's go. Okay?
And I think really pushing that message out now hard is what we really need.
All right. Anything else? Want to throw me out? All right. All right. Done? Thank you very much.
So I have a question under this item for Sherri.
You've got. Let's go to, let's go to non-action items. Where do you want to go?
No, I want to, I want to stay on 27A. But I want to talk about the direction or where we're going to kind of go on the $10 million on the CARES Act. And so one of the, here we can give a little bit of direction, and so, or I just want to feel out where we think we're going. So one of those deals with, have we already received the $10 million from the state? And are we, I'd like us to put it-
We have not received the $10 million yet.
Not yet? We're going to put it in its own fund?
And as far as I said, it'll be here soon, is what we've heard. I was planning on using the Grants Fund to isolate that money. It's a short period of time, so once we create a fund, it's, you can't really delete it. So I was going to use the Grants Fund to house the money, which will be isolated in its own grant numbering system. So, so it will be isolated.
I just want to make sure it's not commingled in the general fund. It's important to me-
No, it'll be in the Grants Fund, and it'll have its own program number. Thank you very much for bringing this up because I want to know how you guys feel about spending this money. There's a lot of different options we have. Obviously, you know, the city expenses, it's great that it covers city expenses. It does not cover lost revenue at all for the city. It does cover, we can do a program to help small businesses with their lost revenue, but it will not help us in any way with ours. Even giving a break to small businesses on their business licenses would not qualify because that's lost revenue to the city. So if we give them a break but take the money out of this, out of the fund, we're still getting revenue that's lost to the city. So we'd have to do kind of a grant program to them and find out, you know, how much money they really lost, get financials and tax returns, and then, you know, appropriate whatever we can to, fairly to those businesses.
So part of our other discussion as a board is really even to determine, unless I misread anything in there, is to what qualifies as a small business. And so I noticed when I looked up Clark County, they only did 20 people. Well, I'm, I don't know about how the rest of you feel here, but I'd like us to consider looking at the Small Business Administration's definition, that we have some concrete rationale for how we selected small business. So I'd like to, I'm just throwing that out again.
No, that's a great idea. I have a call with NACO at four o'clock to kind of figure out what all the other counties are doing. Vegas has had the money for the longest, so they've already developed kind of a grant program for their small businesses. So I kind of wanted to, you know, see what they've developed, and we don't have to go in the same direction, obviously, but, but at least to get an idea of what they're doing. Another thing that we can do with this money is give it to, or of course, we have to reimburse it for COVID expenses, but for the school district, any expenses they might have related to COVID with the kids going back to school on top of flu season, you know, it could, they could, I think, help the school district. And then any hospital, we can help the hospital if they have expenses, as well as any long-term care facilities. So I don't know-
Nonprofit. Or nonprofit. It can-
Or nonprofits, yes, yes. It can help nonprofits.
I mean, I think, I'd like us to make sure we look at, I mean, there are a lot of nonprofits in the community, the one I work for, obviously, is one, but-
Right.
But Fish and AEDV and the hospital is a nonprofit, and, you know, Ron Wood, there are a lot of them that probably incurred some COVID expenses in directly relationship to helping their clientele. And I'd definitely like to see that. And I have a couple more thoughts when Lori's done, too.
So the other thought that I had is, so first of all, it's a, it's a lot of money, and I'd like it to be impactful and truly help in the message that we want to do. So I'd like to look, and maybe it's a survey of the nonprofits and our local businesses through the chamber to find out what it is that they think they need to be able to, what have you had to do with COVID that's not being reimbursed by another source? So I, I have a little bit of concern with the hospital, the school district, I want to help. And I certainly think they're in the priority ranking of what we want to do with the $10 million. But I want to make sure they're not, they don't have another source to go to, which maybe some of our nonprofits or some of our local businesses really didn't have an opportunity to get help. And so I'd like us to, to look at that programmatically, that we're putting the priorities in the right order.
Yeah, that'll come into account with the small businesses, too, because if they got a PPP loan, you can't double dip. So, so that's kind of why I want to see what the application they've come up with looks like, because obviously, we want to see what they've lost, but we also need to see what they've received.
And maybe with something that we just discussed just a moment ago on that enhanced public outreach, I don't want to go so fast here that we leave out a component that we should be addressing. So I'd like to see if there isn't maybe a two-week comment period that, again, we let that flow through to us instead of us dictating what's going to go out. I'd like an opportunity for the businesses and the nonprofits, school district, to give us the initial input for us to design a program that is effective for Carson City. Just a, just a thought.
Yeah, that will, well, after talking to you guys today, we were planning on, you know, contacting the school district and everybody, if you guys were obviously on board with that, to find out what, what their expenses are, what we can help them with. You know, obviously, give them the CARES Act and give them the parameters, but then find out what, what they, you know, what their estimates of their projects are. And we're doing the same thing with the city. I know we put up a bunch of Plexiglas, and it was very temporary. And so we're looking at making them more permanent as we go forward. But you're right, it is a lot of money. We have a very short time to spend it. It has to be spent by December 30th, or we have to give it back. So-
This is a good time to look back to 1969, when Carson City was, became a consolidated municipality, because the $10 million goes to this county, and if you're in the other counties in the state, that 10, I think, two or three of them, you split that money. And that, not only is that a political issue, but it's, you know, it's, it's an issue, who gets money? So-
Right. The CARES Act does encourage us, though, to help out school districts and other local governments.
So, you know, I agree with a lot of what Lori said. I think, you know, maybe as a board, we can, at the next meeting, set some priorities for you, or maybe we can even do it now. But I, I think that, yeah, we can't move, this is, this is John's story, right? Sometimes government moves too fast, sometimes government moves too slow. You've pounded it into my head, John. But in this case, we don't really have an option but to move fast. Not so blazingly fast that we missed anything, but I, above all, do not want to give that money back to the state. I want it to stay in our community.
Right.
So one of the things I thought of is that we are struggling here, and to me, I want to state upfront that this, in my mind, is a low priority. I think helping businesses and helping nonprofits is a higher priority, reimbursing the city for expenses that we can't otherwise get reimbursed. But somewhere in there, if we're getting close to that and we have so much money that we can't spend it all, we are struggling in this room for social distancing. And a redesign of this room, in my mind, would be a good way to spend the money if we can't find another way to spend it. Whether we, you know, elevate this a little bit and create a second lower tier, like at the legislature, permanently construct, you know, the spaces for staff. So anyway, that, I would just like us to put that on the list because I think it's a way we can spend money and put ourselves back into a configuration that allows us to continue to social distance, but yet sit in such a way that we can do our jobs.
Brad, then John.
And so I think that, I don't disagree with Stacy or Lori. However, I think that my priority list is, is a little different. Between the two CARES Act grants, we have $13.8 million. Is that correct? 10.1 and 3.7.
With the jack bus, yeah. I mean, they have to be spent for-
So it is a lot of money in a short time to spend it. So obviously, city expenses, reimbursable expenses are the top priority. But after that, my second priority would be the school district. I think that it is going to be an enormous struggle. They were already facing a budget deficit. It's going to be an enormous struggle for them to try to open up and socially distance, and they are going to need all the help they can get. So the school system would be my second priority, followed by the hospital, because we can't afford to see the hospital go bankrupt, and they have been suffering because of their inability to perform other procedures while they were waiting for the coronavirus patients that ended up never showing up. Then I would go to the nonprofits and care facilities, and I would put the, the business community either last or not on the list at all, because I think that our, our reality will be, if you look at what happened with the PPP program, the payroll program, the entire $10.1 million, I think, could go out just in businesses probably within a day. I think that the demand for, for business interruption, loss of income in the business community is so enormous that we're not going to be able to address that. And so I would place that as my lowest priority. So that's the way I would list them, the city, the school district, the hospital, and then nonprofits and care facilities tied, and then the business community. If we can get to that point, which I don't think we'll be able to, it would be at the lowest priority because I don't think that we can deal with, with the demand that we're going to see for that particular item. I just think it's going to backfire on us.
Good.
I'm not going to get into the bidding part.
John, go.
Excuse me.
Jump in there, Supervisor Barrett. Jump in there.
I'm not going to get into the, I don't call it the bidding war, because that's not what it is, but the definition of who ought to get what at this point. I'll, I'll do some listening and figure out where I stand on that. I just have a question, because my wife and I talked about this, and she's at the state level, so it's different. But is the question, do we have to spend it by December 31st, or do we have to obligate it by December 31st?
It has to be spent.
Has to be actually out the door.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Well, there you go. I just wanted to get that pounded into my mind. Thank you.
By the way, tell your wife happy birthday.
Ah, you know, yes. My wife is-
Nothing gets by me.
My wife is very young, but a year older on the calendar.
All right. Happy birthday, Jeanie, that's good. All right, anybody else? You know, anybody here remember John Berkich?
Yeah, yeah.
Well, John used to work at the Public Utilities Commission, and I was a young staff guy, and I had John, we were doing some heavy-duty financing stuff, and I thought I had John caught pretty well on, you know, because I was trying to catch him a little bit on a cross-examination. I said, how do you get to the, how do you, how do you run those figures like that? And this is our city manager came back, and it's a cute story. He said, creative accounting. My, 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 my advice is, we do everything we can, even using creative accounting, as long as we can get by an audit and see if we can get this done, because we've got six months to work on it, and let's do what we can the right way. Thanks.
Yeah, I don't disagree with any of the priority lists. You guys mentioned, I, I kind of slide with Brad more because I agree, I think the school districts are going to need quite a bit of help. And so in my mind, I was going to do like a big information gathering for a couple weeks and just figure out how much everybody really needs on the priority list, kind of excluding businesses, and just see if there was anything left. Because I think we'd be heroes to the community if we could even say, $1 million, we're going to somehow give to small businesses, we're going to do a grant program, tell us your losses, and if we can give you, you know, 10 cents on the dollar that you lost, at least it's something to help them.
I want to go backwards on the record because I think maybe Brad misunderstood me. For the business component, I'm really thinking of PPE. I was trying to do the messaging that you need to wear masks and you need to have Plexiglas or you need to, so maybe I'm, I don't know that I was looking to go in the direction of losses. It's more, what are you going to do to survive as a business and to meet the goals of keeping COVID out of your business? And so that's what I was looking to say. What is the survey? What are, what are you trying to accommodate or accomplish, which is exactly the same as the school district, exactly the same as the nonprofits? What is it that has impacted your business that we can do to mitigate the COVID? I don't think revenue replacement is going to be, or loss, losses is going to be one of the components. I'm just not seeing that same as us. We're in the same boat.
That's the only place we can help with revenue losses, though, and that's the biggest impact to businesses is the revenue loss.
But I don't think we can accomplish it.
It's the biggest impact to us.
I just don't think we can accomplish it. With $10 million, we're not going to be, we're not going to accomplish that at all. But what are some things we could do to mitigate? And especially what's your ongoing between now and December? I'm hearing from some of the businesses, they can't even get the masks because they're not big enough to, to be the guy to get the product. So is there something the city could do or the health department that we could mass order the masks and say, hey, every once a month on the Friday, we're going to distribute 30,000 masks out there to our public? I guess that's what I don't want, is the overlooking part that I'm talking about, that they might need.
That's a definite possibility.
And that we're reaching out. Because we want masks in the community being used.
Chief, I think you go, Chief.
Okay. Yeah, I, I, I agree with Brad and what Lori said. I think in terms of the priority, I can, I can jump on board with Brad's priority list. And I think what I wouldn't want to do is go down the path of having money to help businesses, and all of a sudden, we help 5% of them. I can't, I actually can't think of a worse thing that we could do than to put our businesses through this ridiculous process to try and get money, and then we accommodate a minuscule percentage of them. So, yeah, I agree, if there's a way to help with personal protective equipment or whatnot, that may be a way, a small way, but a way that we could help them. And, and I think that the lost revenue component is just, is too difficult to, and it would be a nightmare to administer, I, you know. But we would need somewhere in there, if we are helping businesses, whatever that definition is, I agree with you of what a small business is. And whether we set that based on, which is a common thing to do, a number of employees, it's pretty common in the state, there's already, you know, tax law in the state that we could use in terms- There's already, you know, tax law in the state that we could use in terms of definitions. So I think that's easily done. So, yeah, thank you.
So I agree with Lori and Stacy's comments. You know, if we can look at stockpiling PPE and then either keeping it in our own inventory or distributing it or both out to the business community, I think that's a great idea. So I'll I'll anxiously await your, your spreadsheet showing your estimates on the allocation of the money going down the priority list, how much you think the city is actually going to use of that 10.1 million, how much the school system thinks that they would potentially need and so on down the list to see what might be available to look at making some mass purchases of PPE, because as we heard from the health department earlier, with flu season coming up, we may need additional PPE. We may want to stockpile some of that now while it's available and not wait until we see a surge in flu and COVID during the winter and then have the same issues that we just went through where we're scrambling to try to get the equipment.
You know, as, I had another comment here that I was going to bring up as part of, of COVID, but, but it, it kind of ties to this and I just, you know, it troubles me and I know it troubles all of you, that we don't have the public in our meetings to be able to provide comment on each agenda item. I don't like it. I know none of us like it. If there's a way we can accommodate a return to some method where the public can come in at least for their agenda item, so that we can open things back up again, because it's intimidating for people to, to call in, to provide comments in that method. And it's just not the same as sitting down in a room and looking at somebody when they provide that comment. So as part of the money that we spend at the top end, I'd really challenge our staff to find a way to make that happen. Whether we, you know, extend the envelope of the room, to let people wait out in the lobby and come in one item at a time, whether we need thermometers to, whatever that may be. I want to get people back to our meetings. I want to get the public back to our meetings. I, I think it's vital that we do that, because I don't know about you guys, but I'm feeling disconnected. I'm trying to stay connected by talking to people, email, but it's just not the same. So I guess we're all feeling a little disconnected as we isolate ourselves. I mean, it's part of what we have to do, but anyway, that's, that was one of the things.
That's not a motion, but if it were, I would certainly second it.
Well, we ought to have-
It's a priority.
It's a priority, but that's one where we need to have health and our folks really look-
Totally agree. That's why I said-
Find out what we're doing here.
Yeah.
I mean, I, I agree with you, Stacy, because it does disconnect us. I mean, I run another state agency as well, and it's, it's very difficult to run a board meeting to do that. Okay. Anything else on this, this item or the, under, what are the supervisor's items? Anything? Anybody?
Yes, Mayor.
We'll gather estimates and get it back to you as soon as we can.
Great. Under item 28, if you're moving on to item 28.
Yeah, we're on 28.
We had our, Stacy and I had our Carson Water Subconservancy meeting last night. And Carson Water Subconservancy has teamed up with the Army Corps of Engineers to do an alluvial fan inundation study. And what that actually means is that in this particular area, especially on the east side of town, the rain is in the foothills. The rain comes down through the draws and gullies. And then it spreads out when it hits the valley floor, and that's where the flooding is. And you'll see a migration of material. So the material's washing down through the gullies and then it hits the bottom and it spreads out. And whether that's mud or, or whatever it may be. And so we're doing some, some modeling to try to determine what the potential for flooding is in certain alluvial fan areas in the, the Carson River Basin, including Douglas County, Carson, Land County, which is where the worst of the alluvial fan flooding is. So Rob Fellows has been working intimately with the Water Carson Subconservancy on this mapping, along with the Corps of Engineers. And so we're making some good progress to try to determine where that flooding is so that we don't have issues like Land County and Douglas County have had where they've had residences that were actually buried in three or four feet of mud. And so we've been pretty fortunate, but the east side of town along Prison Hill and the Riverview area is very susceptible to this kind of flooding. So that's our update from-
One, one additional quick point by that is that those, this alluvial fan flooding that Brad is talking about is, it doesn't require a 100-year flood over a great area for alluvial fan flooding to cause significant damage. It can be an isolated thunderstorm that drops a tremendous amount of water over a very small alluvial fan area that causes, you know, hundreds of thousands of dollars in damage. So it's an important study.
I think that's great. I mean, you know, sometimes we get fixed on the waters coming out of the west mountains here, you know, where you see all the snow. It's important to realize that, you know, we're in a bowl. The bowl's got a couple sides on it.
You know, there's one other presentation we had last night that, that the executive director, general manager of the district is going to present to, to us, each of the governing bodies. But just a little preview of it is the work that he's done with the state water engineer to, to look at water use, groundwater use, surface water use, over each of the valleys and the regions. And just a huge takeaway for me, which was interesting, is over the last, some of those graphs go back, what, 20 years, 25 years? Yeah, some back into the 80s. Water use, thanks to development standards that local governments have put into place and education of our people, has actually gone down despite increases in population. And that was a significant takeaway, excuse me, yeah, gone up. And then, you know, despite that. So it's, it's pretty interesting. Yeah.
So there's less demand to price out then?
Yeah. Yeah. So, yeah, yeah, it's interesting.
Anybody else on this last item?
Yes.
Yes.
You want some more?
I have one more. I, I know that we tomorrow have a meeting to certify the vote. I'd like to congratulate Supervisor Bagwell on, on the distinction of being our, our mayor-elect, which will be official tomorrow. But along with that, I'd like to add an agenda item sooner rather than later to the agenda to look at options for filling that position. I know a lot of it depends on Supervisor Bagwell's actions. Well, it does, frankly. And when she chooses to resign a seat, but if we could have the, I mean, I think I understand a lot of them. But my goal, and this is purely my goal, you know, we've got an election coming up in November. I think it's fortuitous that Lori won in the primary. Because it gives us the opportunity, without spending any extra dollars, to have a special election to fill the seat, as opposed to this board filling the seat. And if I had my druthers, I would much rather our electorate fill a position than the five of us fill a position. So that's my two cents worth. Obviously, that's a decision that the board has to make as a body. But I'd really like the public to have input, as opposed to just the five of us having input. So that's my two cents worth.
Anybody else?
I want to go through some of those comments, and not only do I want to congratulate Mayor-elect Bagwell, I also want to congratulate the far superior person who will be replacing me, who won as an outright at the, in the primary, Lisa Schute. I think she'll be an excellent, excellent supervisor and probably a lot better than the one she's replacing. I also want to report to you that the Airport Authority, like the, they deal with the water, I deal with the air. And we met last night and it wasn't too much that was, but we did get a report from our manager that things are proceeding well with the effort to get more night flights to be able to land here. And I urge anyone who wants to to update themselves on that and help out if you can. He said that the FAA is beginning to look at that, or is looking at that with some approval in his view. And that would be just a great boon for Carson City in the long haul.
Tell me that again, please. Tell me that again.
We're trying to get a method for night flights to come in here safely.
At far?
Some do, yeah. Night, night flight, people who fly in at night. Some do already. Obviously, the NDOT uses it at night and some others. But we could probably get more in here if we could get a approach that worked. Because of our surrounding mountains, it's tough. But we're working on that. And if you can help Ken mourn out that, I urge you to. We're doing everything we can on the Airport Authority to, to advance that. But it takes a long time, as you all know.
Okay, thanks, John. All right, anybody else? Board? Lori? Congratulations to you. How's that?
Nice to rise. Thank you.
Good. I think I'll just give the gavel up now. Go, go on a vacation. All right.
Well, that's what I'm going to get.
Well, that's what you're going to do. Not you. All right. Are we, are we ready to adjourn? We're in public comment, last period. Dennis, we got anybody?
We have no final public comment, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. All right. Well, this is an absolute objection. We are adjourned until the next regularly scheduled meeting of the board of supervisors.